Okay. Clerk, will you please read? Oh, all right, we are back in session. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 17-25?
An ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amended Title 15, Chapter 154, land usage of the St. Joseph County Code by adding Section 154.517 to include a property value guarantee agreement in any industrial solar permit issued by St. Joseph County, which shall become a part of the St. Joseph County Solar Ordinance. Petitioner Dan Shetzel.
Mr. Katanzerite, committee report, please.
Bill number 1725, Mr. President, comes to the full council without a recommendation, and it does need to be amended.
All right. Area Plan.
Jen, could you put the PowerPoint back up when you have a moment? In the interest of members of the public that are present, I'll briefly go over the amendment as it was presented at APC. This is a text amendment initiated by the county council to add a property value guarantee for solar energy systems. Last year, this council did hear and approve some amendments to this chapter, including new development standards for large-scale solar and a special use for large-scale solar in agricultural districts. The current amendment, as it was presented in the resolution and voted on by APC, would apply to old properties within three miles of a solar energy system. First, the developer, prior to receiving permits, has to enter into a property value agreement with old property owners within three miles of the project. The developer also has to provide to the county a surety bond in the amount of 20% of the assessed value of old properties within three miles. The current amendment provides a form for the solar developer and individual property owners. It would technically act as a private contract between the property owner and the solar system owner that either party could invoke at the time a property owner wanted to sell. The ordinance does seem to imply that they do have to use that form, though, and not an alternate one. As far as what's in it, there is a process for how the individual properties would be appraised if listed for sale. It states a broker has to be used and how the listing price would be determined. Ultimately, if they only receive an offer below the asking price, the SES owner has to compensate the difference or they can offer on it themselves. It also states that there will be no appeal from the agreement by either party. At the Area Plan Commission hearing at June 17th, one member of the public spoke in favor, while six people spoke against it. The APC has forwarded this to you with an unfavorable recommendation, 5-2, I think? That's it? Tonight? Oh, it's actually 5-3, sorry. Tonight, your options would be to vote to adopt the text amendment as is, which, in case it would take effect. You could also vote to approve an amended version. If you wanted to move it forward with amendments, those amendments would then have to go to Area Plan for consideration at our August hearing. If they approve of your amendments, then the ordinance takes effect. If they disprove, it does come back and you'll have to confirm those amendments. And then finally, you could vote to deny or not adopt the text amendment, and then it would not take effect. At this time, I can take any questions.
Any questions for Area Plan? Mr. Thomas.
So, let's talk about the amendments again.
Go ahead.
Okay, I know you just said ask about the Area Plan, but we just talked about, with Mr. Zales about that. Can we, in the light of being transparent here, let's just talk about what we just said about if we can amend it here and it does not have to go back to Area Plan?
So, my understanding from the Indiana Code and Mr. Zales, and I believe Mr. Garrett is also present, is that if you vote to amend it, it has to go back to Area Plan for consideration. So, you, we would vote to approve an amended version, and that would go to Area Plan for consideration. At that point, they would vote either to approve your amendments or disprove your amendments. And if they approve your amendments, you guys don't have to take further action. If they disprove your amendments, then it comes back to you one more time.
So, if they approve our amendment, Clint, and we vote on it tonight, it goes with Area Plan, and they agree with us, we don't have to vote on it again?
I don't read the municipal ordinance in that particular fashion. Section 154.525 gives general authorities to the council under Title 15 of the land use ordinance, and it states that the county council shall have the power and duty to initiate amendments to the text of this chapter, and that's exactly what we're doing.
I'm going to just yield to my plan director to evaluate further on that point.
Yeah, so this falls directly under IC 74606. So, if a text amendment comes before the legislative body from the Area Plan Commission with an unfavorable recommendation, the legislative body may either adopt the ordinance as they receive it. They may adopt an amended version, but if they do adopt an amended version, the Area Plan Commission, within 45 days, must vote to either approve the amendment or to disapprove the amendment. If they do not vote within 45 days, the amendment, the amended text amendment takes effect. If they approve it within 45 days, it takes effect. If they disapprove it within 45 days, it goes back to you and you have to reaffirm your vote.
So, Mr. Zales, do you agree with that?
I'd have to look up his citation. I'd ask you to give it to me again, please.
What was that? Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be IC 3674606. And that's G1 through 2.
Sean, would you, while he's looking that up, would you say that's standard operating procedure?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not often that we've seen county council-initiated text amendments, and it's also kind of puts us in that position where if it is amended, it has to go back. Typically, Area Plan initiates it, and the Area Plan Commission then has more control on what they sent forward. In this case, they had to consider it as it went before them. So, now, if you were to amend it after it's already gone through the Area Plan Commission process, it needs to go back. So, that is a standard process for these unique circumstances that we're in currently, yes.
So, as my, I understand now, we would be voting, if we were to vote on the bill without an amendment, we would be voting on the bill that came before you, that had the three-mile radius, that had no exception for industrial zones, that included all solar from one panel on the side of a house to large-scale solar projects?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you. Mr. Zales, do you want to amend it, or should we proceed?
It's a dense statute, or either it's me that's dense, but I'm getting through it. It's taking me a minute.
Okay.
Mr. President Shetzel, can I, can I ask additional question while he?
To Mr. Klein?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, Sean, did, well, did Area Plan have a chance to, to consider the, the public feedback on this and start to formulate a proposal prior to or in parallel to what the council's doing right now?
We did attempt to do that parallel, but since that original version had already been sent to the Area Plan Commission for consideration, we couldn't, the Area Plan Commission wasn't unable to consider any of those proposed amendments at that time.
Okay, I'm just wondering how that, that feedback loop works, because, I mean, if people in the community, you know, express a desire for, for something, they have a concern for something, then they, they reach out to the county and, and, you know, we're the elected representatives. So, I guess ideally, some of that feedback would come to us, and then we might direct that to the various departments such as, as Area Plan. I don't know that many would really reach out to Area Plan directly. I guess I'm not really asking a question.
Well, I mean, in this case, you're absolutely correct. No one really reached out to us asking for this. I think that was done at the council level. You're correct.
Mr. Rutton, I can just add that at the Area Plan meeting, we had several folks from the community speak on the original language. We had Area Plan members make suggestions, point out things that they thought could change. So, that's some feedback.
Yeah, and I was, I was really asking more before that, like, like, who initiates and, and how do they, how does it get initiated, right? So, even before it was reviewed in Area Plan, I'm just not sure how, how the community could initiate something with Area Plan without going through a public hearing or, or the council directly. This is more, I guess.
Just as a, I think you're asking as a general question, kind of, as well. Historically, if council members are interested in a text amendment that they've heard from their community, they do approach Area Plan staff, and since we have experience in writing ordinances, we assist with writing those ordinances. But I also do just want to say, just for the record, I do have members of the public ask me about changes and things all the time, so it's not.
They would call, call the area office.
Yeah, now that I know you're speaking generally, we get recommendations for text amendments from the public all the time.
And from our, our board members, our BCA, our Area Plan, just based off of things that they hear as well, so.
Okay, well, that sounds delightful.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. To give Clint some additional time to absorb the lengthy verbiage from Indiana Code, I was wondering if I could ask Phil Garrett to maybe come forward. First of all, thanks, Phil, for sticking around. I'm sure you guys were, that's part of the job, right? I'll just leave it at that. Outside of the procedural elements that were brought up from Indiana Code that Clint's reviewing at this moment in time, you, you provide legal counsel to the economic development team, but I believe it's also somebody else from your firm who provides legal counsel to the Area Plan staff, correct?
That is correct, yes.
In, in your understanding of the ordinance as it's proposed, or perhaps in discussion with legal counsel for the Area Plan staff, are there any other concerns within this ordinance language that create conflicts or create concerns of litigation for the, for the county as a whole?
I can say, perhaps not within the language of the ordinance, but Area Plan's council has brought concerns with regard to other state statutes, yes.
So, so this ordinance in conflict with other state statutes?
That's correct, yes.
I'd hate to put you on the spot if you happen to know those statutes.
I, I do, I just want to say that I don't represent the council, so.
Of course.
Okay. Specifically, I believe it is Indiana Code 3672-8, which prevents a unit from adopting any ordinance which has the effect of prohibiting or unreasonably restricting the use of solar energy systems, other than for the preservation or protection of the public health and safety. So, Ms. Ecker could give a better description of her concerns there than I could, though.
Of course, and I'm, I'm putting you on the spot in, in her absence, and I, I appreciate that. It's just in passing, I think you expressed that some concern existed, though we didn't get into the brass tacks of that.
Correct.
And I appreciate your willingness to come forward. Would you mind reciting that code?
Sure, it is Indiana Code 36-7-2-8.
And broadly, that was any additional regulation prohibiting solar outside of things related to public health and safety?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett, can I follow up?
Sure.
Six Indiana counties have passed similar legislation. To your knowledge, have any of those counties been taken to court and that legislation been found unconstitutional?
I do not know that. Again, not my opinion, but just because it hasn't been challenged doesn't mean it's not violative of Indiana law.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to establish a fact that, in fact, none of them have, to my knowledge, none of them have been found unconstitutional.
Yeah, it, I don't think it would be a question of constitutionality, it would be a question of whether it's negated by the statute.
Okay, very good.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Zales?
I've peeled through the statute that he's cited about the process, and he's correctly stated what the process is. The only question I have in my mind is whether or not it applies to what we're doing here, given what I've seen in our local ordinances, and whether or not there's anything in our local ordinances that give us the authority to do exactly what we're doing in initiating a law and passing it after listening to what Area Plan has recommended.
Okay.
So, I can't, I'd probably need to give you a more detailed memo, once I peel through this and read some of the case law and the interpretations of it, to feel confident about where we stand.
Okay, could you please do that? And then, in the meantime, can we go ahead and move forward and either pass or not pass the original or the amended version?
Well, I think if you go forward with the amended version, the recommendations on the amended version, then you're sending it back to them to review under the code citation that he has given you, and I may have a different recommendation after we leave here this evening.
Okay, but we can move, go ahead and move forward.
I believe that you can.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that, then? So, I think we have some folks here who would like to speak on this. All right, so I am the petitioner. Council members, you received the original bill after first reading in May. I'm happy to answer any further questions on that bill, but would also like to present the document that was added to our packet and that I handed to members in caucus as an amendment to Bill number 17-25. I'd like to go through the changes with you. The three major changes are the three-mile radius is reduced to one mile, the ordinance does not apply to areas that are zoned industrial, and the ordinance only applies to large-scale solar energy systems. I'd like to read through the amended version with notes in red and point out the other minor changes. So, council members, on page one, you can see underlined the one mile of large-scale solar energy system, except for those located in an industrial area. That was three miles, and there was no exception for the industrial area. Also, below that, you see LS-SES, that of course means large-scale solar, so we're referencing only large-scale solar instead of anything smaller than that. Below that, you see homeowner or landowner, underlined, it was homeowner or county, okay? Or, well, I'm sorry, it wasn't homeowner or county, it was just county. Below that, you see LS-SES, underlined, again, small-scale solar was removed from that paragraph. Next page. A paragraph C was removed as annual assessments were seen as excessive. That paragraph required annual assessments to be paid for by the solar company, and those were seen as excessive, so that was removed. Under that, you see Form in Exhibit A, underlined, that used to say following form, so we're just changing the heading here to Exhibit A, which you see below that. The last paragraph, again, three miles is changed to one mile, the property is located within a one-mile radius of any solar, any large-scale solar energy system. The next page. The words "has been granted" are changed to "intends to apply for." Whereas guarantor intends to apply for a permit by the St. Joseph County Planning Commission for the construction and operation of a solar energy system described as, and then it has a blank line there, that is changed simply because of the order of how things happened, when it was, has been granted, the process was out of order, so the wording needed to be changed to intends to apply for. The second to last paragraph, one-mile radius is, again, replaces three miles. We also removed a sentence that said a list of all potential lease agreements has been shared between the landowner and the guarantor. The sentence, "This guarantee is limited to real property owners who own property in St. Joseph County. At the time, any large-scale solar indicates to St. Joseph County the intent to build a large-scale solar system." Extent should actually be intent there, that was a typo. "This replaces, St. Joseph County issues a permit to any solar developer. Furthermore, the definition of property owners, heirs and, or immediate family members of the property owners as of the effective date listed above." Next page, A, where it says, "Assume there are no large-scale solar energy systems located within one mile of the property." It was, "Assume there are no industrial solar energy systems located within three miles of the property." The wording was changed because industrial solar energy systems had a different definition than large-scale solar energy systems, so we're trying to be consistent. Again, B, one mi, uh, three miles is changed to one mile. Again, large, industrial solar facility is changed to large-scale solar energy facility. And then later in that paragraph, large-scale solar energy facility replaces industrial solar facility. We removed some language that required the guarantor to reimburse concessions to buyers. The logic here is that it would be difficult to, to prove that the concessions were a result of the large-scale solar being there. The second to last paragraph, we removed, "Under no circumstances shall there be verbal communication between the property owner and the potential purchaser concerning solar," and we replace that with, "The property owner shall not disclose any information to the potential purchaser regarding solar." So, it means the same thing, we just cleaned up the language. And that's the last change. So, the major changes are the three-mile radius to one mile, the ordinance does not apply to areas that are zoned industrial, and the ordinance only applies to large-scale solar energy systems, so that we are not burdening people who want to put solar panels on their house or a smaller-scale solar system for their farm with these regulations. Any questions? Mr. Thomas.
Do we have a definition of large-scale solar systems? Or do we have a definition, or a small-scale?
Yes.
Is there a definition anywhere?
The definition is in the zoning ordinance, in the beginning of the solar system. It's any, any solar energy system with a total panel area of over 40,000 square feet.
Forty thousand square feet?
Of total panel area.
Panel area?
Mm-hmm.
So, one acre is 43,560, I think, and, okay, so a little less than an acre.
I mean, it depends how they lay out the panels, so.
Yeah, but it's panels.
Yeah. And small-scale is defined as any ground-mounted system below that amount.
Any ground-mounted system?
Yes, so, so I will say that specifically, when it defines large-scale solar versus small-scale solar, it is referring to ground-mounted systems, not roof-mounted systems, like you would see in, like, a house.
Is there anything in our state statute?
That defines?
That defines this?
I, there might be, I can look in a moment and get back to you on that.
Mr. Garrett, I got my homework for you there.
I, I know where it would be written, I would just have to look it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas, you have a question for Mr. Garrett?
Is there anything in a state statute that says anything about a definition of a large-scale solar system?
I believe there is a definition, I don't have the code site for it, though.
Okay, all right. But it sounds like Farrell's got that, this is local ordinance, I'm just curious if the state has anything.
I believe they do under their section, but I don't know the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments from council? Mr. Rutt?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. So, Sean, can you restate that, that IC code again?
Sure.
All right, so this is IC 3674607. 606, 606, I apologize. 606G, "If the legislative body rejects or amends a proposal, it shall be returned to the Plan Commission for its consideration with a written statement for the reasons for the rejection, or, in this case, amendment, is what we're considering. The commission has 45 days in which to consider the rejection or amendment and report to the legislative body as follows. If the commission approves the amendment or fails to act within 45 days, the ordinance stands as passed by the legislative body as of the date of the filing of the commission's report of approval with the legislative body or the end of the 45-day period. If the commission disapproves the amendment, the action of the legislative body on the original amendment stands only if it is confirmed by another vote of the legislative body within 45 days after the commission certifies its disapproval. If the legislative body fails to confirm its action under this subsection, then the ordinance takes effect in the manner provided in subsection F."
Sean, can I, I'm gonna, so I'm looking at IC 36-7-4-607F, okay? And the language reads very, very similar, so it's easy to get confused on all this, but it says, "If a proposal receives either an unfavorable recommendation or no recommendation from the Plan Commission, then if..." Dot, 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 dot. "If the legislative body amends the proposal, it shall be returned back to the Plan Commission for consideration." They have 45 days. So, it sounds like similar language. It could be either one of these.
You're correct. 607 was, is for a text amendment, 606 is for rezoning. So, very similar, but yeah, it is 607, you're correct.
Okay.
So, what was your question?
Well, that was, I guess that was my question, is if, if you would agree that that's the Indiana Code that applies in our situation.
Yes, I would agree. If you adopt an amended version, I agree that it would have to go back to Area Plan for their approval or disapproval within 45 days.
Any other council comments?
I did find that, if you wanted it now, that definition in state law.
Sure.
So, just says context, in 2022, the state legislature adopted default standards for solar that are not, you know, mandatory, but like that other places could use. So, under IC 8142-2, they don't use the term "large-scale," they use "commercial solar energy system." As used in this chapter, "Commercial solar energy system," or CSE system, means a system that has a nameplate capacity of at least 10 megawatts, captures and converts solar energy into electricity for the purpose of selling electricity at wholesale for use in locations other than where it's generated. And then it says the term in.
And then it says, "The term includes solar panels, collection feeder lines, generation tie lines, substations, ancillary buildings, solar monitoring stations, and accessory equipment or structures."
This is a definition for large-scale solar?
This is a, um, that state law has for a commercial, um, solar energy system that would be relatively equivalent to how we look at it as well.
So they're talking about use in, uh, megawatt, they're not talking about size of the land, they're talking about usage?
Yeah, their definition is, yeah, their definition is slightly different in that they use, uh, megawatts. I will say, um, when I've looked at other county ordinances, I usually don't see them measured by megawatts. I've seen some, um, but usually it's acreage or panel size, or, or things like that, so...
Mr. Thomas, you'll have to forgive me, 'cause I was, I was looking something up, but you asked a question on what the definition of large-scale solar is. Is there a definition in here that either defines it directly or ties into a definition found elsewhere?
Sure, so the definition is found elsewhere at the beginning of, uh, the Renewable Energy Systems Chapter, under, um, Solar Energy Systems, it's defined as any ground-mounted system with over forty thousand square feet of, uh, panel area.
In the county ordinance?
In the county ordinance.
And then, so this, this ordinance, does it need to, or is it using a term that's...
Yeah, so this...
So the term itself's already defined in county ordinance?
Exactly, this would sit under the Renewable Energy Systems Chapter, so...
We don't need to do it again.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Any further comments for area plan or for the petitioner? All right, uh, Mr. Tanner, under the wire.
Sorry, coming in at the eleventh hour on that, uh, that request. I say this with some hesitation, I don't know if my colleagues up here will agree with my sentiment. Um, I say it with some hesitation, 'cause I, I believe there are some people here who wish to speak on this issue. Um, but I'd like for, because of the question of procedure, because of the question of the other Indiana code, uh, related to public health and safety, and because of the extent of the amendments, um, that we are considering here that weren't, uh, publicly published, um, I'm wondering if others would, um, consider referring this back to committee, uh, per section ten I of our council rules. I'll make that as a...
Is that a motion?
That, I'll make that as a motion, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to refer Bill number seventeen dash twenty-five back to committee. Clerk, or any comments?
Do we get a chance to address with comments the, the, the motion?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Tanner, I, I think I'm inclined to agree with you. However, I think we are having a public hearing that we, um, we gave notice to, proper notice, and I think some of the people here are here to tell us how they want to feel, so I wonder if we proceed with the public hearing, uh, and then capture this motion as a vote after the public that's here was able to, to give comment, and then we don't forget that public comment, it's a part of this process.
Mr. Zales?
You've got a motion on the floor that you've got to dispose of.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that we must dispose of. Clerk, will you please take the role?
What's, can you repeat the motion, please? Back to committee?
The, the motion is to refer this item back to committee, uh, per section ten I of our council rules.
Okay, thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
Ms. Sess?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Thomas?
No.
No? Mr. Katan's right?
I'm gonna say no. Only because I wanna, I, much like Mr. Rutt, I want to have the public hearing tonight, and we can still go back to committee, I think, after the public hearing, if that's the desire of this body, but...
Okay, Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig? Mrs. Shabaz? Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Rutten? President Shetzel? Appears the noes are seven, two.
I have a question.
Okay, motion fails seven to two. Ms. Sess?
Do, do he, pardon me?
You gotta pull your money.
I don't know how close I have to get it, do I have to, okay, alright, wow, alright. I'm practically chewing it, actually. Uh, so, uh, my question is, has the public seen the amendments, uh, that Mr. Shetzel has submitted? Have they seen that? Are they speaking to the, the amended version, uh, amended version, the redline version? Or are they speaking to the original?
They can speak to the amended or the original.
Okay, but they've seen, so everybody has a copy, or they've seen the amended?
But we often make amendments that the public has not seen.
That's true, okay, so...
So...
And I am in favor of having, uh, the ability for people to speak tonight, um, but they, I guess they, as long as they understand what they're speaking to, right, you know?
Okay, I can review one more time the major points of the amendment, just to be sure, everybody?
No.
Okay? I'm getting the sense that no one wants me to do that?
Okay, alright, alright.
And so, why don't we just go ahead and have our public hearing? Okay, let's do that. I'd like to go ahead with the public hearing on Bill number seventeen dash twenty-five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please sign in, you may speak in favor of the original or the amended. Please sign in and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Jason Jean, Lakeville, Indiana. Um, I'm speaking in favor of the original. I'm, um, going to read an email from Jordan at Hexagon that was sent to Abby Wiles on June eleventh of 2024. Abby, I've attached a few articles about property value impacts due to solar facilities. One is from the University of Texas, and the other is from Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory. Both of them suggest neutral impacts or at most an average of one point five percent decrease in value for residences near facilities. Both articles also suggest ways to mitigate these impacts, which can include setbacks, screening, and some degree of compensation. I find that email very interesting for a couple of reasons. For one, here we have Hexagon admitting in writing that values are affected. Previously told all of us that that wasn't true, I'm sure you all remember that. Also in this email is Hexagon admitting that one way to deal with the value loss is by compensating property owners, which is what we're here talking about tonight. So Abby had this information over a year ago. Indiana Code thirty-six, seven, four, six oh three states, plan commission and legislative bodies shall pay reasonable regard to conservation of property values. So again, Abby was aware of this over a year ago, I'm just curious as who else knew and didn't care to do anything about it. Every step of the way, we've had to fight for our property rights. The South Bend Tribune headline yesterday included the question, "Why North Liberty gets protections and not the data center or other industries?" The unfortunate answer to that is because the county leaders didn't do their job, and those citizens either didn't know their rights, or were naive enough to think that the government was gonna do the right thing. The county's past failures protect property owners is not relevant to us here today. Just because you fail one day is not an excuse to purposely continue to fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jean.
Uh, George Yoliya, uh, two, seven, five, two, zero, Quinn Road, North Liberty. Um, I have something here I'm gonna read, it's, uh, according to Mary McClint- Clinton Clay's Property Value Impacts Study, um, the Western Mustang Solar offers seventeen thousand to adjacent property owners. Uh, the Lighthouse BP Agreement offers fifty, or five thousand to fifty thousand to surrounding property owners depending upon proximity to the solar farm. The Poozy Solar offers ten percent of appraised value for neighboring properties plus an annual thousand-dollar payment of, or thirty-five thousand for the life of the project. Vesper Energy offers range from seventy-five hundred to twenty-five thousand. These payments are significant because the developers' own appraisers have supplied, determined that, without, the solar farms will not have adverse impact to the surrounding property owner values. However, these payments can only be interpreted as an, an admission of value impairment. The pre, uh, pre-predence, sorry, the preponderance of the evidence based on these studies indicates that the industrial solar farms do negatively impact adjacent properties for this reason. The market considers solar power electric-generated facilities to be a detrimental condition. And when you guys talk about property value, you know, people who buy the property, yeah, they make out, well, it's the people who live next to them that want to sell or move, they don't. So saying property values don't change, ask the people who try and sell it, that live next to it, but aren't willing to sell out to the big companies. You ask them if their property value got affected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Lyles, six, nine, five, two, zero, Redwood, Waterton. I just wanted to speak to the three-mile versus one-mile limit. Being a retail pharmacist, you'll pardon me if I don't check Zillow every day, but my property value has gone down almost two-hundred thousand dollars since last May. Now, I have a friend who has a very nice ten-acre farm that's two-point-one miles, I drove it off on my car from the nearest leased field. She priced her farm below comps and has still had to drop it almost eighty thousand dollars and is not getting a single hit, and the feedback is because nobody wants to be that close to the solar farm. I just wanted to throw a real-life example that's right now out to you guys, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Lyles.
Hello, I'm Kim Clark, uh, two, eight, five, five, one, Riley Road, North Liberty. And I just want to say that I really appreciate your efforts to protect our property values. You know, uh, as ho- homeowners and families who have invested in this area, this is something that's very important to us. Also, we think about the state park being right there and, and the beauty of the area. But decisions like these ensure our homes retain their worth and remain, that North Liberty would remain a desirable place for people to live and maintain our, um, you know, freedoms and our, um, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Uh, Lorene White, um, I'm an attorney practicing in Indiana. In nineteen twenty-six, in Euclid, Euclid versus Emble Reality, the United States Supreme Court found that zoning is a valid exercise of police power, which local governments use to protect the public welfare. Next, in a landmark nineteen fifty-four decision, Berman versus Parker, the United States Supreme Court upheld the right of communities to use zoning for aesthetic purposes. According to Daniel R. Mandela in his book, Land Use Law, a clear majority of courts held that aesthetics alone are a legitimate governmental purpose for land use regulation. As you are aware, Indiana Code thirty-six, seven, four, six oh three tasks counsel to pay regard to five criteria when advancing an ordinance amendment. These criteria are the comprehensive plan, current conditions and character of current structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adopted, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and the responsible development and growth. Indiana Code also lists the following purposes for local zoning ordinance: to provoke, promote public health, safety, comfort, morals, convenience, and general welfare, which includes the protection of property values, and enhancing the livability of residential neighborhoods. I want you to understand that nowhere in the Indiana Code does it state that when amending an ordinance, governments must consider whether or not their ordinance will withstand a legal challenge. Your job in adopting an amendment is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of your citizens. This includes the protection of property value. Additionally, it's my understanding that comments have been made concerning future litigation. To be clear, arguments focused on potential future litigation only serve as tools to instill fear into local boards. I would encourage you not to fall prey to these bully tactics. For the record, there are at least eight counties in Indiana that have adopted property value guarantees as parts of their ordinance: Adams, Franklin, Kosciusko, Grant, Jasper, Madison, Posey, and Spencer. Additionally, Delaware County has a proposed ordinance amendment, which will be voted on this summer, which includes a property value guarantee. Of those counties, Kosciusko's property value guarantee is the oldest, adopted in two thousand eighteen with a two-mile radius. Finally, my review of case law regarding the topic has shown that, to date, no lawsuit has been filed challenging any of the property value guarantees adopted in the aforementioned Indiana counties. Um, I, I would also state that the code section that you were read earlier, um, IC thirty-six... Sorry, do you want me to finish?
I'm sorry, Ms. White, your time is up, but thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Ma'am, after you speak, please sign in.
I did, earlier.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Denise Spooner, I am a licensed real estate broker in Indiana of twenty-two years. I served around the Madison County Planning Commission for three and a half years, and one year on the BZA. I was appointed to the Solar Subcommittee and helped draft our ordinance, which contains a property value guarantee with a three-mile radius. The ordinance was signed into law December of twenty twenty-three and has never been challenged. We've had three attorneys review it and approve it. They wouldn't have done that if they couldn't defend it. Kosciusko County was the first, and Lorene just said that, it has been unchallenged since twenty eighteen. I'm here today as a real estate expert professional to provide the necessary education to St. Joe County to defend the ordinance as written with a three-mile radius with no amendments. I'm not an attorney, so nothing I say is to be considered legal advice, but I'm giving St. Joe County today a copy of Madison County's Solar Subcommittee binder. It contains the documentation that we considered with drafting our ordinance, and the information contained therein full of peer-reviewed studies, expert testimonies, and Attorney Jason Kishme's legal advice for counties. That attorney has been in more litigation in the state of Indiana than any other coun- any other attorney. And this was to create an excellent record of defense should the ordinance receive any legal challenges. Our three-mile radius was not pulled from thin air, but based upon studies that documented damage up to three miles. Texas, Rhode Island, all studied to three miles, the Berkeley study went to four. It is also clear from these studies that the larger the megawatt and acreage, the greater the impact, which forces many homeowners to live inside industrial power plants. Health impacts from EMF can extend beyond one mile, according to electrical engineer Dave Stetter. Solar leases even state that the owner must acknowledge, quote, "That certain aspects inherent to the operation of the solar energy may result in some nuisances." They mention visual impacts, noise levels, glare, and other things, but it is the potential interference with radio, television, telephone, mobile telephone, or other electronic devices that is concerning, because pacemakers and heart monitors would be considered other electronic devices. These hazards and smoke from solar panel fires and batteries can extend for many miles, and right now, there is absolutely no evidence that all the above-mentioned impacts stop at one mile. It is the other way around. Chapter eight of the Indiana Citizens Planner Guide states, "Farmland preservation is not just about food supply, it's about rural landscape and lifestyle. Applying a three-mile or ra- three-mile radius not only protects the non-participating homeowners, but it protects the entire beautiful countryside and landscape of that affected area. Additionally, regarding data centers and other industrial inventor, uh, planning, uh, plan commissions should already guide those endeavors to already industrial-zoned areas, and this is why we have zoning laws in the first place, because buyers do clear of commercial and industrial zoning. But if you're in favor of sprawl and taking of ag lands, then those homeowners that would be impacted deserve protections as well, because unfair-taking lawsuits could result. And if you don't know what an unfair-taking is, please ask. In September of twenty nineteen, the American Planning Association memo, memo has already given advice on proper siting of large-scale solar plants, and I have urged constantly the Indiana planning commissions and their governments follow that advice. Please ask me any questions that you may have."
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Anyone else in the room wish to speak? You can just leave it on the table there. Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to speak in favor of this, either the original or the amended bill? Before we go to the people online, I do want to, there's a misconception, and I got a phone call today from a lady who said, you know, she lives in North Liberty and talked about Hexagon and talked about the three miles and said, "Please protect us." And I had to remind her that Hexagon filed their development permits hours before we passed the new solar regulation in July of 2024. Hexagon is under the rules that were passed previous to July 2024. So passing this ordinance will not, this ordinance will not apply to the acreage under which Hexagon filed those permits in 2024. Okay? I just want to clarify that because that seems to be a misconception with some folks. If future developments, if Hexagon were to apply for a new development permit in another part of that area, then yes, it would apply. Yes. Mr. Zales, is that correct?
Sorry, I'm reading.
I'm sorry, okay. I believe area plan, folks are running away. Don't run away, please. Okay. So you can please just verify what I just said is correct, based on your knowledge of the law, please.
That's absolutely correct. If they expand beyond what they submitted permit applications for, then anything that's in effect at that time would apply to them.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so we'll move to... Yes, Mr. Fig, please.
Can I ask you a question? How long are those permits good for? I mean, forever? Or do they got a time limit before they run out?
Three years is my understanding.
Okay, so they applied for a year ago. This is July, so a year ago. Okay. Thank you, Sean.
That's actually a very good point, Mr. Fig. Yeah, Mr. Thomas?
Is that different, when they apply for that permit, is, that's just your standard, standard building permit? Or is that, uh, the three years, is that different for solar versus...
No, no, it's standard for any permit that's submitted. Correct, correct.
So, so when the three years are up, then, and they don't renew, they can renew it for another three years if they don't do anything?
No.
No?
No.
So if, once the three years is up, they're under the new ordinance?
That's correct.
I have opened a can of worms. Yes, we are. Can we finish the public hearing? That's actually a good point. Let's finish the public hearing. I am sorry, I opened that can of worms, but Mr. Fig and Mr. Thomas made very good points there. Okay, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please sign in and state your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes.
I have already signed in, and my name is Pam Clays, and I live at 1106 Bellevue Avenue in South Bend. My comments really are to the original. And what I want to say is that this unfairly targets solar development with onerous rules. Having to guarantee property values for one mile or three miles, how many developers are you going to get that are willing to do that? And that's the crazy part about it, because solar is renewable, and it's much more better for our land than the data centers, which are more invasive and do not have this onerous burden. They wreck our water and deplete our wetlands and all that. You're putting this on solar, and solar is good? I just don't understand that. We run the risk of turning New Carlisle into a three-mile-island type of situation, that here's New Carlisle, and here's all this stuff that Dan Caruso referenced before, and I totally agree with him. I pity poor New Carlisle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clays.
Hello, my name's Annie Morejon. I'm a South Bend resident. I live at 624 Cottage Grove, and forgive me, I'm just going to read straight from here for the sake of time. So I'm coming to you with a pro-business, pro-development orientation. In my opinion, it's my view, that the property value guarantee and bond bill, even with the amendment, will make it prohibitively expensive for solar companies to start in our county. I can't think of another additive, needed industry we regulate out of existence in our county like this. I think we all probably want jobs, economic growth, more affordable energy. If we want these things, we can't place what is essentially a tax on solar farming, in my view. Solar is an up-and-coming industry. It has huge growth. It has made huge growth in affordability and innovation. And I just have to wonder, don't, don't we want this economic growth in our county as well? More sources of energy will also make our energy more affordable in our region. So why make solar prohibitively expensive to come to our area when that could bring down realistically energy costs for working people in our county? I need help understanding what the benefits of this are of making it impossible to solar-farm when it is possible for solar, agriculture, and residential spaces to coexist around one another. Some options that could help with these privacy concerns and concerns about agriculture in the area. There's tree and shrub buffers. There's screens that could be put up. Perimeter crops, dual-use approaches, like allowing grazing and solar, just for example. To me, it feels foolish to completely regulate this new industry out of our county when it could be something that could be a huge source of growth for us. As someone concerned about clean energy, affordability, and who is hoping to one day raise a family in this region, I really implore you to vote to deny Bill 1725. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brian Will. I live at 52484 Hickory Road in Clay Township. And I'm here tonight, I'm co-leader for the South Bend Elkhart Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby, a national organization committed to bipartisan solutions to the climate crisis. And yes, climate change is a crisis. The recent deluge in Texas that has resulted in over 100 deaths and 161 people still missing is sadly yet another example of the deteriorating health of our planet and the resulting impact to humans and the wider environment. This deluge occurred just a few months after the worst urban fires in modern history in the LA area, which cost billions and is now driving up insurance rates across the country for all of us. The fires were just a few months after the Hurricane Helene ripped apart a bucolic area of North Carolina, hundreds of miles from where the storm came ashore. What will be the next weather-related disaster to hit us? We won't have to wait long, probably just a couple of months, thanks to legislative malfeasance and politicians ignoring the seriousness of the problem. Every year, our planet sets records for average global temperatures, and here locally, we now experience what used to be late-July temperatures in the middle of June. In St. Joseph County, we're seeing more air quality alerts due to wildfires in Canada and due to particulate pollutants from power and steel plants drifting downwind, aggravating breathing problems, heart conditions, and contributing to cancer rates. The weather disasters are a reminder for Mother Earth that we must do more to take care of the climate and aggressively promote renewable energy. Our elected officials should have been doing this 20 years ago, but our politicians lack the courage to deal with the problem. Which brings us to you tonight, council members, who I hope, with your vote today, will be on the right side of history. Our county can be open for business, as the previous speaker just said, and part of the solution by encouraging solar to be a part of our energy mix. But if you approve this ordinance, you are closing the doors and costing our county jobs. Solar in St. Joseph County is good for local manufacturers, trade workers, installers, engineers, project managers, and landscapers. Crossroads Solar, for example, in South Bend employs 40 people who make solar panels. One of the founders of Crossroads, Patrick Regan, noted at a meeting last week with President Shetzel that if this ordinance passes, it could result in the closing of his business. The council already has passed legislation in 2024 that significantly increase the restrictions on solar projects in our county. Anything more is government overreach. Please vote to protect our local economy, support local solar jobs, and diversify our energy supply by opposing Bill 1725. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will.
Good evening, council. Steve Francis, Tuesday Lake Drive, Clay Township. I think, just for the crowd, I think that you all know what you passed last year, but I'll remind you, you passed a very extensive ordinance restricting solar. A 500-foot buffer between a house, the corner of a house, and a solar farm. A 150-foot buffer between an adjoining property line, not the 50-foot that, you know, industrial zones have, that's 150-foot. And the most important component, a special use provision, which means any activity, any proposed development, needs to go through the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, get approval, and then come to you, and you have ample opportunity to impose additional restrictions if you so choose. I think this is regulatory overreach. I'm very surprised at members of the council who speak about small government, who profess to not want to impose costs upon property owners, because you are imposing costs upon developers and businesses, but also property owners who might want to lease their land. And you are extending that regulatory overreach to ameliorate a project which may not have been planned properly or perfectly, and I urge you not to do so. I do think that there needs to be some counteraction to the testimony to studies. I have a meta-study, which analyzes studies all over the country. I'll just cite three of them. In Minnesota, Chicago Assessors Office contacted, did their own study, no adverse impact on property values. In fact, it seems conclusive that valuation has not suffered. North Carolina, no negative or positive impact in home values due to proximity of a solar farm. Virginia, a study by Kale Associates, study the value of a property adjacent to solar farms in Virginia, not adversely infected by the construction and operation of solar facilities. So there is, there are competing studies, but I think the vast majority of studies show that the impact is on adjacent, directly contiguous adjacent properties, which are taken account for by the measures you passed last year. Extended zoning, extended setbacks, screening, by the way, as well, and the special use permit. This is unnecessary. It's regulatory overreach. It will be seen around the state and the country by a county that is considered not entirely rural as a sample of how you can beat back solar and renewable energy around the country, and I think that's a bad precedent to set for our county. Clearly, either one, one or three miles, doesn't make a difference. There could be a wooded area between you and the solar farm. It's not going to impact your property. I urge you to vote against it and not to send it back to committee. Just vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Hello, council. My name is Andrew Tucker. I live on South 34th Street in South Bend. I'm also a member at Kern Road Mennonite Church on the south side of town, and as a member at Kern Road Mennonite, I participate with We Make Indiana, which I hope you all are aware of, a group of faith-based organizations working to make St. Joe County a place where everyone can thrive and flourish. And so while I empathize with some of the folks who spoke in favor of these amendments tonight, I represent a number of folks who feel that the work that you've already done, as Mr. Francis pointed out, to amend, to institute solar regulations last year is sufficient for the county to protect, to protect landowner interests. And I feel firmly that there are win-win-win kind of ways for us to implement solar in the county that protect the rights of individuals, that protect our lands and waters, as Mr. Will spoke to, that protect local jobs, and that preserve the rights of individual property As a number of folks have pointed out, these requirements that are proposed now, I think, are onerous and will, in effect, kill solar in our county, the opportunity for solar. I'd like to read a section of the ordinance, the Solar Renewable Systems Ordinance that exists now, that says, "The county finds that it is in the public interest to encourage the use and development of renewable energy systems that enhance energy conservation efforts and promote sustainable development. As such, the county supports the use of solar energy collection systems, and in no way are these regulations intended to severely limit the siting of solar energy systems." And I feel that the amendments that are proposed will absolutely contradict the existing language in the ordinance and will, in fact, severely limit the siting of solar energy systems. And I would ask, if not solar, what are our alternatives? Solar is now, on a cost basis, affordable and competitive with any other energy form. It's renewable, as has been pointed out. I'm certain that we don't want coal in our county, and this is why the state of Indiana has retired six gigawatts of coal-fired power since 2012. This is why another nine gigawatts of power are projected to be phased out by 2038. Power companies are turning to renewable energy projects to make the difference, and this is the direction that St. Joe County needs to move in. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate especially the opportunities we've had as We Make Indiana to speak with Mr. Fig and Mr. Shetzel about this. Thank you for listening to us. We hope that you'll continue to work with us to make St. Joe a place where everyone can thrive. In short, solar needs to be a part of our future here in St. Joe County. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
My name is Barbara Carmichael, and I live on West North Shore Drive in South Bend. As Andrew Tucker mentioned, on July 2nd, We Make Indiana convened in a very congenial meeting with Dan Shetzel that included local solar business owners and experts from our community, and you've just heard from a couple of them. It was clear to me at that meeting that there are better and worse ways to incorporate solar. This bill, if passed, will prove harmful to the health and economic security of all St. Joe County residents over the next 20-plus years, since it will effectively kill solar development going forward. It's just going to be too onerous for people to step up. As ever-expanding data centers seriously tax our energy supplies, expand our reliance on fossil fuels, and increase our rates as consumers, we must employ common sense, not nostalgia, narrow solutions, or ideology to make both large and small-scale solar part of our energy solution.
Thank you, Ms. Carmichael.
What has already been said, my name is John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax. What has already been said need not be repeated, but I think what you have to do is realize what the context is that you are making your decisions upon for the next 30, 40, 50 years. In February, I spoke before this group, on February 11th, and said at that time that CO2 had reached 426 parts per million, actually 426.65. Since then, as of May, it has risen to 430.51 parts per million. And I will repeat what I said before. This has never occurred in the history of mankind. The last time that we had CO2 on this earth at this level was 14 million years ago, long before the beginnings of man's rise to civilization. I have in my hand, and I'd like to distribute to you folks, a graph that shows what this looks like according to the Scripps Organization at University of San Diego. We cannot afford to make any more energy from coal. We cannot afford to have any energy coming from any form of carbon. We got to get serious, because your children and your grandchildren are going to live in a world that I have never had to experience, and hopefully you won't either. You must... You must get serious about solar. You must get serious about weaning us off of carbon.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Chris Cobb, I live at 215 East Polk Hagan Street in South Bend. You've heard much testimony from those against that I think is thoughtful and supported by carefully gathered evidence. What I want to focus on, a little bit different, I want to speak against not only the original amendment, but also the amended text that was read out. I think if those who submitted this ordinance are already seeking to amend the text, that seems like that's something that shouldn't be approved. But the ordinance is also not, the revisions are not sound. The one-mile setback makes no more sense than a three-mile setback does. I live about a mile from downtown South Bend. I can barely see the buildings of downtown South Bend from my house, and they're sticking up 10 stories. Is a solar farm a mile away from someone's house going to have any effect? As people have spoken, it is the adjacent properties, if any, that could be affected, and those are already addressed according to the current ordinance. The one-mile radius is just as excessive as the three-mile radius. Moreover, the idea of putting in the industrial, the exemption for industrial zoning is contradictory within the ordinance, because the plan of the one-mile radius would extend well beyond the area that's zoning. Industrial zoning is designed with an understanding that we're dealing with 50-foot setbacks between residences and industry. So you could have a situation where someone could cite, as long as they were citing this solar farm in an area that's zoned industrial, they could be 500 feet away under the current ordinance, and the whole mile, the whole mile radius element would be abrogated. The language that you're working on in the revised ordinance is contradictory, right, in a regulatory sense. It's not ready. And it's not ready because there's no way to revise such an ill-founded and unfair idea to make it sound. It has to be rejected. That is the only thing you can do with something that is imagining harms and overlooking all of the benefits of solar energy that doesn't pollute the air, that doesn't cause cardiovascular illnesses in people, that doesn't release carbon dioxide and drive climate change, that is quiet, that is odorless, that is generally a good neighbor. I understand that people are upset about it, but look at what solar actually contains.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
My name is Daniel Cametta, Riverside Drive, Portage Township. I also oppose Bill 1725, and, which I do seek to impose severe restrictions on solar development in St. Joe County. Solar technology has minimal negative environmental impact. It appears to me, given the national tenor of the one political party, that members of this board may well be walking lockstep with that ideological organization at the top of the party, promoting fossil fuels over green energies. This, you know, again, I empathize with the homeowners, but there's always been, not in my backyard, that has always been a case. And we have historically put coal-burning facilities in marginalized communities. We've historically built, you know, nuclear plants in marginalized communities. Solar energy, given the, you know, given the alternatives, is a heck of a lot cleaner source of energy and a lot less damaging overall to those property values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cametta.
Hi, my name is Wesley Lance. I live at 4006 Irish Hills Drive. We've heard a lot of, you know, opposition to this bill, and I just wanted to reiterate the idea that the regulations on solar are going so much further than on things like the data centers, which are going to require a lot more power from our area, that the solar farms will be able to help mitigate that need. And the adverse effects of the solar farms, as have already been spoken about, can be mitigated with things like tree barriers and screens. The, I'd also like to see more look, more research into dual use for the land. Solar farms don't have to just be for generating energy. As has been mentioned, you can use them for grazing, agrivoltex, the ability to grow certain crops on the land. It is a multi-use industry that will bring jobs into our county. And as we've been talking about the reality of climate change, we need to see more investment in this, in this industry. We are seeing already adverse effects on our health with things like burning coal. We need to move away from this. Cardiovascular health, lung health, and as has been mentioned, it's the duty of the council to protect the health of its citizens. This is working, investing in solar is protecting the health of our citizens, not just today, but in the future. I think we're looking really short-term, and investing in solar is a long-term investment in our future, and I think that this is going to kill our investment in our future and in an industry that we desperately need to move forward in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landis.
My name is Jeff Ray. I'm the President and CEO, Southland Regional Chamber, with offices at 101 North Michigan Street here in South Bend. I represent the business interests of 1,300 member businesses in virtually every industry across our region. They employ about 60,000 people here. My objection is partly solar, mostly policy. So first, I had a chance to spend some time at the State House as solar regulations were considered, and much of that debate was really about, communities can't prohibit or reasonably restrict solar energy. And I'm afraid that this is disguised as an effort to prohibit solar energy by make it so overly burdensome to get it there. It creates a little bit of a false narrative that solar is more objectionable than any other use in St. Joseph County. There's not a single use in St. Joseph County that requires something similar to what you're proposing tonight. That's problematic for us. So if you were proposing this for hog farms tonight, I'd probably be here to argue against the same ordinance, because we think it's a little arbitrary to sort of single out solar and suggest that it's a worse use than any other use in the community. And so we're concerned about its passage and what its further implications could be down the road on other types of uses. If we were to poll the folks in the audience tonight, all of us would have uses that we thought were objectionable. That list wouldn't look the same for everybody that we're talking to. We're concerned that this is a bad piece of policy that could get worse as people to potentially expand it later. We encourage you to continue the pro-job, pro-growth approach that we've had. We think this is, the ordinance you passed last year is responsible and puts good action in place to control solar. We think location, size, design, separation are all good things that you did. The property value guarantee, though, we think's a bad track, and we encourage you to vote down this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Good evening. Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. I find it a little bit ironic that the next item on your agenda is called the Fairness and Equal Treatment Ordinance, yet this does not have the unfairness and horribly unequal treatment name, which I think should be on your bill. I really sincerely do appreciate, Mr. Shetzel, your standing up for your constituents, your immediate constituents in your district, and I appreciate their concern, the people that live here in St. Joseph County who have concerns about the value of their property, especially those who may be immediately affected if a solar farm is put up next to them. People who come in here from Cosiusco County, which is not anything at all like St. Joseph County, with apparently an agenda, not so much. I just have a common sense, economic point of view. We have these data centers in St. Joseph County that are, one, going to use a huge amount of our resources, and, two, suck up electricity in unbelievable amounts. That's going to end up costing us more money. It's just a simple fact of math. Solar provides energy. Solar does not suck up any of our resources, and we need some balance so that we can keep the cost of electricity at least down somewhat from what we're going to see rise and rise and rise when these data centers go online. And I can tell you, having lived most of my life in Virginia, where the first data centers in the country were built, they are detested now in Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Good evening. My name is Mike Crook. I live at 449 South Philippa Street, South Bend. I didn't even know this was going to be on the agenda tonight, so I didn't come prepared to speak to it. So please forgive me if my thoughts aren't as clear as maybe they could be. I'm curious, Mr. Shetzel, though, how of all the different industries in St. Joe County that we had, did you wind up singling out solar, the solar industry, to compensate people for, if indeed it does lower their values? Earlier this evening, I heard Mr. Klein talk about different things that land could be used for if they approved the zoning change, and he mentioned CAFOs, he mentioned slaughterhouses, industries that are far more repulsive than solar panels. I mean, is your ordinance open to amending it, to adding industries like that? And I know when I was on the council years ago, every time an ordinance came up to make some kind of change in the county, back then, the big thing was cell towers. Every other month, we had a cell tower on our agenda. It would fill up this room with people coming out saying how cell towers are going to lower their property values, and, you know, we would approve them, and life went on, and I didn't see where that ever came to pass. It was other things, you know? We wanted, once someone wanted to put a funeral home in, and they cried about that. Gas stations, they cried about that. So I guess at some point, what do you, do you open this ordinance up to everybody that feels their property is going to be devalued? You know, solar panels, solar farms, if you think about it, are a good use of the land. They create no light pollution, they create no air pollution, they create no water pollution, they create no noise pollution, no odor. They are a very benign use of the land. If you look at what Honeysuckle is doing with theirs, they're planting native plants out there, they have goats grazing on it. It's actually a more natural use of the land than growing corn and soybeans on it year after year after year. So I would ask you to reconsider all this and vote this down. And my last question is, if you decide to send this back to committee and then you make some changes, does it get a second public hearing, which, to me, doesn't sound right, but it seems like that was kind of brought up tonight as well? So if you're going to take the final vote on it tonight, I would ask you, please, vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crook.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Deborah Durell, 2167 Autton Road, South Bend. I'm speaking against this ordinance. Back in 2017, when we heard about the IEC developments, several of us were concerned and expressed those concerns, and we started attending the meetings. And in spite of our outcry, the IEC is still expanding, in spite of the IEC overlay and the core area establishment. Later, happily, about that time, the ordinance was passed, right here in this room, the Area Plan Commission had proposed that required native plants on solar farms, and we were thrilled about offsetting the loss of the productive farmland and improving tired soil, reducing threats to the food supply by supporting pollinators, and using minimal water, and eliminating almost all chemical runoff into water resources that we were trying to protect. We cautiously and skeptically engaged on the Honeysuckle Farm and thankfully found, after deep dives with BP and the Honeysuckle people, that the early reassurances for all of those things were, in fact, implemented for all to see. Right now, I can say I am happy to drive by the pollinator areas and the grazing areas. Solar farms are the most passive and respectful to communities' form of development for farmers and landowners that we currently have in this county. If we are not chopping down woods and wetlands, what we have right now is solar farms as the best option to retain that land for future use for anything other than paving it over. Other than such things as what the Potawatomi Band are doing with their land, we should take them as an example for some of the areas in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durell.
Nancy Duncan, Ridge Place, Blair Hills, Mishawaka. I'm here with a couple of points that I want to make for you. I'm not an expert on climate change, I'm not an expert on energy. I'm a citizen of St. Joe County, I've lived here since 2002, and I have a bunch of friends who, believe it or not, pay attention to local politics, and they decided it'd be a swell idea for me to come to your meetings and listen and report back on what all goes on. So the first thing I want to make just has to do with your process, because I've been coming and I've been watching and trying to get the hang of what goes on. And I heard about this bill coming up and went looking for it, had to really, really find, search for it, and I did. And I read it, I made notes, I figured out what I thought about it. And so when I came here tonight, I had not seen the new amended version, but I want to point out to you that the agenda for today, usually your agendas are posted about five days in advance. The agenda for tonight was posted yesterday. I understand we had a long weekend, but that long weekend was not a surprise to anyone. So as I listened to all of the descriptions of amendments, I thought, this is really like reading of a new bill, and we really need, those of us who actually are watching, paying attention and care, we probably should have had more information, more time to absorb what it was that was going to be discussed tonight. Now, I'm not done, though, because I'm not, I see the point of going, let's just send it back to committee, but don't, because it's a bad bill. Why is it a bad bill? Because, first of all, really, I have two reasons. It's a bad bill because it is anti-business, and it reflects anti-science fear-mongering that we are all aware of, but it's not good for our image, it's not good, and it's certainly not good for our progress. Solar, you've listened to all of the people who are explaining to you why solar energy's great, and they're right. The science supports that it's right. We have an internationally renowned university who has built a solar plant on their property. If it was going to damage their property value, would they be doing this? Okay? So, and it's also bad business, I just want to point out one thing, you've had a number of people comment on why it's bad business. These are your words, "No construction permit shall be issued by any department until all property value guarantee agreements have been submitted to the St. Joseph County Planning Department. A surety bond in the amount of 20% of the assessed value of all properties within one mile of the energy system must be provided for the duration of the product."
Ms. Duncan. Ms. Duncan.
Really painful, 20% surety for the duration of the project.
Ms. Duncan, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? I believe Ms. Nix, you had your hand up first. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Cheryl Nix, Clay Township. I'm not going to repeat all the advantages of solar, I think you've heard that, but I will say that I oppose the bill to add property value guarantees because it will eliminate future solar development in St. Joseph County. I don't have to guess, it's already happened to those other counties that have implemented property value guarantees, because that was discussed at the Area Plan Commission. So they have successfully eliminated all solar development from their counties. Now, we're going to be trying to do that while we have all these data centers that need power. Also, I wanted to address this idea of agrivoltaics, because this is a really good thing. And as you heard Deborah Doral say, Honeysuckle Solar Farms is doing that. So a local farmer, Greg Gunthorpe, talks about how he's been able to expand his sheep herd because he doesn't have to pay for grazing. The solar farm lets him graze, and they planted special grasses in between their solar panels. And he talked about how there's actually an American Solar Grazing Association, because this has been so effective for farmers. It saves them so much money. Also, the South Bend-based Innovator Solar served as a construction contractor for Honeysuckle, and they drew 85% of their labor locally for building the solar farm. So again, jobs for local people. So Gunthorpe says, this is a great deal for farmers, and he said, the Honeysuckle, he said, if you go back to each successive generation, you have to do something different. He said of the economics of farming, "Agrivoltaics is the next big opportunity to allow us to grow and be very progressive." So I see solar farms, especially when you're giving, you're requiring 500-foot setbacks, screening, but this is a real win-win opportunity for our county. And when those solar panels are removed, the soil is preserved. So I really think this is a bill that should be voted down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. Ms. Wong?
Thank you. I agree with what everyone has said against both the bill and the amendment to the bill. I'll say that as a parent, I'm worried about the future of our planet, and I'm worried about pollution in our region. With all of these data centers and need for more electricity, solar farms are the only way that we can meet our county's energy needs without polluting, without polluting the environment in a way that could cause really serious illness. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wong, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, yes, Emily Wong, 1343 East LaSalle Avenue in South Bend. Thank you, bye.
Is there, well, I see a real hand up there.
Yes, Chuck Buter.
Yes, Chuck, go ahead. Address, please.
Thank you. Chuck Buter, 16210 Oak Hill Boulevard, Granger. Mr. President, thank you for continuing with the public hearing today. I asked the council to outright deny this bill with no amendments. I haven't seen them, I've heard them, but the previous 15 or so people have all made like really great eloquent comments, and almost each one of them came up with a standalone bullet item for why you could find an objection to this thing. The people that are offended by solar panels have a legitimate concern, and their property rights, especially the people that are contiguous, have that concern, but I believe it was also addressed by the county, and perhaps there's other ways it could be addressed further. But this is certainly not the answer, asking it for whether it's three miles or one miles. This is really the wrong approach. This bill is going to kill solar companies, businesses, jobs, skill sets in St. Joseph County. There's no other way around that, if you go and decide that. The thing that gets me most probably is how capricious this bill is in selecting solar, which is, other people have told you are quiet and good for us, compared to how the data centers, for example, these monstrosities are given a pass, but the solar centers, which have to have greater setbacks and are less impactful, are being singled out here exceedingly unfairly. I think the problem with property values, council changed the trend of property values years ago when they advanced the IEC in the New Carlisle area. This is also going to increase rates because the utility companies have to provide electricity. They know that. And they have to get it in multiple ways. They want to do a lot of, you know, carbon-based, and they want to do nuclear, the state just passed a laws where ratepayers now have to pay for, you know, nuclear research and stuff like that. But they also need solar. And they're going to go and pay this fee that you add on, and this fee is going to be passed on to consumers. Lastly, I want to ask, this disregards the positive impact, we're assuming solar arrays in the community can only degrade a property value, but what happens when the property value goes up, such as a decommissioning? When suddenly you've got this vast area where you just go pluck, 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 you lift up all the solar peers, and you've got new land, new opportunities, and property values from the solar array in a couple decades actually go up? How are the solar companies going to be compensated by the people that live within the three miles? Thank you very much, solar companies. So I thank you for your consideration, but this is not the right way to address the legitimate concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Buter. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number, oh, there is one more. Okay? Helen, are you there?
Yeah, this is Helen McPherson. I live at 1146 Hill Press Road, South Bend. I'm also in a position, for all the reasons that the last several speakers have said, so just want to make my feelings known. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McPherson. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number 17-25. Any further council comments? Thank you, Mr. Tanner. As the petitioner, I do, you know, I'll just go ahead and share what I shared at Area Plan, and I'll make it quick. Folks came to me, and not just in my district, in other parts of the county, interested in, especially after the Hexagon, it was made known that the development permits for Hexagon had been given prior to the July 2024 meeting, and then a couple months later, a meeting in which we passed solar regulations, by getting those development permits that they had sidestepped the regulations that we passed in 2024. And folks, I thought, had legitimate concerns. I told the story of a family who lives on Primrose, who the husband and wife had died in the previous three years. The children thought they had the home sold. So they'd gotten to the point with the people they were selling it to that they were sending in contractors to see how much it would cost to make changes to the home they wanted to make. They thought they had this home sold for seven, I believe it was $750,000. And then after our July meeting, when it became public knowledge that Hexagon would not be held to the new rules that we passed in July of last year, these folks who were going to buy the home learned that solar was going to be on two sides of them, and they backed out of the deal. This family just recently sold that home for approximately $190,000 less than what they were going to sell it for in 2024. So that's an anecdotal story, I understand that, but speaking with folks who see this coming with Hexagon, I felt that their property rights matter, property, our homes are probably our greatest investment for many of us, and that is when I started down this path. So I'm not going to try to refute anything that was said, I think there was a lot said, I think there are legitimate concerns on both sides. However, when I see people who live in these areas because of what's there, because of the bucolic nature of where they live, and because they live there to enjoy that lifestyle and without what they see as reasonable, reasonable expectations by the solar companies, their lifestyle is going to change pretty dramatically. Some of them will have solar on two, three sides of them with the Hexagon project. And so I am not going to pull the bill. In fact...
Why say the law of solar?
I'm sorry, sir, we don't respond to people yelling to us from the crowd. We simply don't do that. All right. Are there any comments from council members? Mr. Fig.
I have a question. So are we voting on the amendment here? We're not voting on the amendment?
We would vote on the original unless someone makes the motion to vote on the amended version.
I'm sorry.
I would like to do that, unless there are any other comments. Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Shetzel. I'm glad we had public comment this evening. You all waited well over two hours to have your chance to speak. You were heard. I'm glad that took place. To be clear, I made my motion earlier this evening to refer this bill back to committee, not to silence anybody, not to ignore the community or your hope to speak tonight, but to acknowledge what I believe may be premature consideration of language, which, to most, is not clearly understood, with contradictions that may exist as identified by those who spoke this evening, and potential conflicts with Indiana code or even our own local code. I'll be it with the best of intentions, an effort by Council President Shetzel as the petitioner to present regulation that I believe is centered on compassion for those who are adjacent to proposed large-scale solar developments, who oppose that kind of development and have serious concerns of that development affecting their way of life. I feel every effort we make, every vote we take, should be based on compassionate service to members of our community. In this case, the compassion for some is possibly misplaced beyond the regulations passed last year, maybe at the detriment of most, and at the risk of regulatory quagmire for all. We have no formal obligation or limitation to what we propose that may rub members of the Area Plan Commission the wrong way, or even feel like we're circumventing their purpose. However, those Area Plan Commission members are appointed, volunteering their time, and take pride in their contributions to our community through their work. Again, we're not obligated to vote or act in alignment with the Area Plan Commission, but with this being the third effort to amend the solar energy systems development standards in just the past 12 months, I believe the APC members feel spurned, and in a certain sense, probably rightfully so. And we run the risk of discouraging members of our community from getting involved with these critical appointments if we continue to circumvent these bodies or act without regard to them in advance. I've enjoyed and expect to continue to enjoy a productive and collaborative working relationship with Council President Shetzel. That working relationship on the council does not supersede making principled decisions, sometimes in opposition to each other. Tonight may be one of those votes.
Is there anyone else on the council who wishes to speak? Mr. Rudden?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments. My head's spinning. There's been a lot presented. This is complicated, okay? We heard each and every one of you, okay? And your comments are included in this process. Regardless of what happens going forward, these comments are a part of this process and will be remembered. It will be summarized. If we have additional hearing, you've already spoke, so that would be in addition to what we heard tonight, okay? I would say, don't feel obligated, if there is additional public hearing time, to need to speak again. We have heard you. In fact, I'm not sure we can allow people to speak multiple times for a public hearing. So I just wanted to reassure on that. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudden. Mr. Fig.
I do have one. I just want to let you folks know, I received the most email on this, in my, this is my third, fourth year on the council, and I noticed 27 of them was like, I thought, coming from a bot, because it was quarantine in my email. And so that was 27. And then I went to my spam folder, and I had 80 in my spam folder, and these emails were all the exact same. And it was from a company called EveryActionAggressi.com. And what really caught my eye on this, like I said, every email was the same, but the beginning of the email, it said, "Dear present pro tempore Randall Fig." I'm not, that's not my position this year. I was that for the last two years. But I just want to let you folks know, if you want to email me or any council members, I would not go through a company like this, just email us, so then I could see it. But I did look at them all, but they were the same. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fig. Any other council comments? Seeing none, I would now make the motion to pass bill 17-25 as amended, as I presented before public comment. Is there a second?
I don't think so, because I agree. Ask as amended.
Can I have a question? Ask a question?
Well, we have...
About that, about that. Go ahead. As amended, the amendment that...
We went through.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure I'm the right amendment, okay? That's it, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Seeing no seconds.
Point of order. I think you should make a motion to amend, and then if that's approved, to then vote on the...
A motion to amend, and then, okay.
Two votes.
Okay. So I will make the motion to amend bill 17-25 with the version that I have read tonight. We have a motion by Councilman Shetzel, seconded by Councilman Catanzerite, to amend bill 17-25 with the version presented by Councilman Shetzel tonight. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
As it's the better of two options, I'll vote yes on this.
Mr. Fig? Mrs. Shabazz?
Helen, Councilman Tanner, as the better of two options, I will equally vote yes on this.
Okay. Mrs. Drake?
No.
I think that the, we can include small-scale solar, so I think that it does need to be amended, so I'm going to vote yes.
Ms. Hess?
I'll vote for the amendment, yes, because I think it's a better option than what...
You'll vote for amendment? Okay, yes. Okay. And then Mr. President Shetzel?
Yes.
The amendment, the amendment passes 6-3.
Let the record show that the amendment passes 6 to 3.
Now you would need a motion as amended.
Now may I have a motion on bill number 17-25 as amended? I'll make the motion to pass bill number 17-25 as amended. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fig. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Catanzerite?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
No.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Hess?
No.
No. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes five to four.
Let the record show that Bill Number 17-25 passed as amended, five to four. We now move on to miscellaneous matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 52-25?
The Fairness and Equal Treatment Ordinance will amend the St. Joseph County tax abatement policy to remove all references and requirements relating to affirmative action. Petitioners, Amy Drake and Andy Rutton.
Petitioners?
The fairness and equal treatment ordinance is pretty simple. It just strikes all affirmative action language out of the current tax abatement policy for St. Joseph County. In specific, I'll read through the things that it does. It strikes language-defining minority. It strikes requirement that the applicant must retain an affirmative action plan. It strikes language that construction contractors must require an affirmative action plan. It removes a requirement that the applicant provide information on the commitment over the five previous years to hiring minorities. It removes the commitment to minority employment during the first five years of the tax abatement. It removes the application requirement that is included, that it includes an affirmative action plan. It removes the application requirement that includes an affirmative action plan for the construction contractors. Under the Enforcement and Compliance Section, it removes the requirement that names, for the names of the minority contractors to be included. And under the Enforcement and Compliance Section, it removes the requirement to add the number of minority persons hired. We are presenting this bill tonight because we feel the tide has shifted on affirmative action. The pro...
Excuse me, Ms. Drake. I'm sorry. While council members are reading an ordinance, please keep your comments to yourselves. Thank you.
The process uses unequal treatment to strive for equal treatment, and that hypocrisy is wrong. Chief Justice Roberts said it well. The way to end discrimination on the basis of race is to end discrimination on the basis of race. The Supreme Court struck down using affirmative action in college admissions, and in June, the Supreme Court said that employers can't discriminate against majority groups. Affirmative action didn't solve our problems because it still treats people unfairly, and Americans believe in treating all people equally. It goes against our deepest American principles. America is a society that is always evolving and blending and diversifying. That's normal, and that's who we are. If anything, Americans have shown they are tired of identity politics. We want to be treated for who we are, as individuals, based on our own personalities, our own merit, our own qualifications. That's what America is, a place where all people have a chance to do great things, no matter who you are or where you come from. I am going to let Mr. Rutton continue.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. So a nickname that is common to be used for this conversation is affirmative action. Another nickname is also DEI. These two are similar, if not the same. The U.S. Fourteenth Amendment requires not to deny any person within our country the equal protection of laws. Affirmative action often runs afoul of nondiscrimination laws by actively promoting the needs of some over others, with a stated goal of correcting past discrimination and deterring it in the future. Our President Trump has issued an executive order to remove DEI from the federal government. The U.S. Supreme Court, as Ms. Drake mentioned, made a ruling limiting how DEI can be used with public agencies. Governor Braun has issued an executive order to remove DEI from our state government. The Indiana Legislature passed new state law, Senate Bill 289, to prevent discrimination and abuse based on personal characteristics. St. Joe County has recently put forth effort to remove widespread DEI from one of our departments. It's important, for such a painful topic, to provide positive inspiration when addressing this issue, rather than turning to insult. I seek for St. Joe County to be a leader in our community on this issue and to provide a positive example for other local government agencies in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutton. Are there any questions from council for the petitioners? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. During our committee meeting a couple weeks ago, suggestions or recommendations for consideration of amendment were proposed. I believe some discussion has taken place since then, either Amy, Andy, Councilwoman Drake, or Councilman Rutton. Have you considered, or are you willing to accept any of those such amendments that have been discussed or proposed at our last committee meeting?
I'd like to keep the bill as is. Of course, you're welcome to make an amendment.
Mr. Rutton, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Any other comments? Mr. Thomas?
I, um, I support the, this fairness and equal treatment ordinance, I do, and from our county's tax abatement. This change is not about taking anyone's opportunity away. It's about making sure every person in St. Joe County is treated equally, based on merit and character. The fairness and equal treatment ordinance will protect against discrimination. What we're doing now is moving forward toward a system where the playing field is level, where businesses invest here. I believe in equality without exceptions and fairness without division, and I'm proud to stand for this as St. Joe County moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I would, I made several comments about history and committee, and how I believe in the last, you know, since the federal acts of 1964 and 1972, we have made incredible strides in how we treat each other, based on, how, based on the characteristics of the individual, their work ethic, their, who they are, not the color of their skin. And I mentioned working at Penn High School and here at the county, and how I feel like I haven't, I haven't seen discrimination based on race. I also, at the same time, believe, as Justice Roberts said in his comments, in the case, recent case involving the University of North Carolina and Harvard, that, you know, we're still not a perfect society, that there are instances where racism does occur and where it could affect someone's opportunity. Fortunately, we have a mechanism in place to deal with that called the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, and I believe that it would behoove us to consider adding an amendment, simply, you know, removing the language as Ms. Drake and Mr. Rutton have proposed, but adding a sentence where we express our expectation that the petitioner be an equal-opportunity employer and abide by federal regulations as enforced by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And so I wanted to say that, and of course, the motion would come after public comment, but I believe just inserting that lets petitioners know, we expect you to follow federal law in this area, and would be a good addition while removing all the other language. Any other comment before we open up to public hearing?
I think...
Mr. Rutton?
I think it would be good to, to add on to that, that if there is a complaint of discrimination in our county, the proper path would be to file a complaint with the Equal Employment Commission, okay? And then they investigate. Not everybody knows that. I didn't know that just a few weeks ago. So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shetzel? Mr. Catanzerite?
Just from my experience and what I know, you must, in our county, before you can get to the EOC, you have to go through the Human Rights Commission. They invite, they investigate a complaint of discrimination. If they find it to be proven that there was discrimination, then you can forward your complaint to the EOC. So there's a couple steps involved. The St. Joe County Human Rights Commission is the starting point, unless I'm incorrect. Do you know anything differently? That's where you start, the Human Rights Commission.
Yeah, I think you are correct, and we at least now have a human rights ordinance in St. Joe County proper, so that was passed a few years ago. But, you know, I'm not sure that having individuals have to file complaints if they run into this, because there still is, I think, there still are quite a few complaints that go to the Human Rights Commission, whether it's for housing, or employment, or whatever, and it's not just race. It's also women, it's LGBTQ, it's, you know, there's lots of reasons that people still discriminate, and, but, so I would have a hard time supporting this bill.
Mr. Tanner?
Mr. President, I just want to confirm that I can reserve my comments until after public hearing, since we've been commenting before.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Without any further council comments, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Stephen Whitner, 56745 Eastview Drive, Osceola, Indiana. Wanted to share a little story that my father-in-law dealt with, Mr. Dale Werner, and a lifelong Being my father-in-law, he worked at Bendix Corporation in the tool and dye department for decades. He would sit at home after work lamenting about the six-three-one affirmative action numbers he had to institute. Dale was a high-ranking UAW union man, and very proud of that fact. He was involved with the apprenticeship program at Bendix Corporation. He had to adhere to these requirements for hiring. Again, the six-three-and-one meant six black employees, three alternate minorities, including women, and one white male employee. The, these employed candidates were not judged on test scores. Affirmative action, racial hires, and not about skills. Dale was so depressed concerning potential candidates who could not even read a tape measure or scale. I myself experienced discrimination in seeking employment when I was a young man. I was told I was too short. However, I could bench press 230 pounds and probably take a good share of any kind of abuse from 75% of the males around me. I was still discriminated against. But I still support the fairness and equal treatment ordinance, given the fact that the Supreme Court and others have said that we need to stop racial discrimination. Affirmative action was and is a failed social experiment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitner. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Clayton Selmer, 52576 Hastings Street. I come to speak in front of you as a veteran. I've served 14 years in the military, 10 combat deployments, and I've seen firsthand what racial division can be sown with things like affirmative action, okay? The military has gone away from that, as this country is heading away from that. But in the military, we don't really see color against, you know, the brothers and the sisters to our left and right. And I think that's the way that the military was intended, and then we went astray with DEI push and all the woke-ism that occurred. During that time was when I left the military, and I came back home, and I've seen even more divisive things between members that I went to high school with, and just between the left and the right. But we can't start healing those wounds until we stop talking about the race and the things that separate us from our fellow man. And I think that the language, that the affirmative action, even though all of that was created with the best intentions in mind, it has gone far too long, and it has become counterproductive to what its true intention was, which is equality. And I think that's exactly what this bill proposes. We get back to the equality, back to merit, and back to treating people based off of the content of their character, okay, rather than the color of their skin, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Selmer. Seeing no one else in the room, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please sign in and state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
I've already signed in. Just as far as setting precedent, a little bit of humor here, I'm 79. Can I still speak?
Mr. Rowe, I would love to hear what you have to say.
I'm just wanting approval. But anyways, County Tax Abatement Policy 52-25 will be amended to remove all references and requirements relating to affirmative action. Quote, "If so, please amend March 11, 1925 Rules and Regulations of St. Joe County Council, Section 1, Statement of Intent, B, that the services of county government be providing efficiently and equitably." That's in your policy. Okay? So I just thought I'd bring that up to begin with. Change your policy if that's not going to be the case. Now, Councilman Drake, quote, "Get out of this unfair treatment. What was fair about removing the word equity from the 2023 Health Department website?" Councilwoman Drake, "I have concerns about reverse discrimination definition, discrimination against white and/or male regarding employment and education." I've had some experiences as far as, quote, reverse discrimination. I survived, okay, that and in the military. Councilman Rutton, discrimination is not solved, but is government the one to solve it? If not government... If not government, who? Alternative would be to encouraging hiring a diverse workplace rather than requiring it. That's wonderful. Who's going to do it? I keep all my time apaced, I wrote it at home. Suggesting from Council President Shetzel, appeared reasonable, but I am in disagreement with him into the country has made great strides in becoming a fairer country. Look at current events, where they're happening right now. I'm in total agreement, disagreement, but that's my position. I'm in concurrence with Councilman Tanner to rework the definition of a minority and instead define it accordingly to federal civil rights law. Why now? That's pretty simple. When Governor Braun eliminated DEI, he replaced it with MEI, Merit, Excellence, and Innovation. He was following President Trump's playbook. Where's the merit of cutting the Health Department massively in Indiana? Where is the merit in that? Two thousand twenty, oh, yeah, and then because of that, Indiana has the forty-eighth rating out of fifty states as far as health departments. Two thousand twenty-five federal budget cuts Medicare, Medicaid. Of course, there's some fraud and abuse in it. But was all that merited, okay, as far as cutting Medicaid? I don't think so. Look at the, in opposition, I knew I couldn't get it all the way through. But I think that-
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
I could go more and more, but I didn't get it in my three minutes. Okay, the bottom line is, I have a lot to add, and I look forward to commenting on the person.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
I am proud of this.
Thank you.
I have a quick comment. This is Pam Clays. I still live at eleven oh-six Bellevue Avenue, because I need to get going. But I want to tell you that we need to vote no on this bill. It is nonsense. If we do this, we run the risk of playing the game of preferential treatment like it used to be. And that's why we have DEI and affirmative action. I'm not a rich white person. I don't have preferential treatment. I'm white, but I'm not rich like others. Despite what some people say, we still do need affirmative action. Do not remove this language. I wish I could stay until I hear my friend Trina Robinson speak, but I can't. I'm going to watch her on the tape thing on Zoom, yep. So, I hope you vote no. I'll see it when I see the news. I trust you will vote no. There's no reason for us to do this. And let me say one other thing I've been pondering, and I'm just going to say it. If something like this came out of Biden, would you say that same thing, Ms. Drake? I would say not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clays.
Mike McManus, still at the same address. These are the most shocking things I've ever heard, seriously, that the three of you that spoke in favor of this said those words? Shame on you. I'm seventy-five, and I ask the question, when and why is America such a fraidy cat country? I don't know when it started, but I know why. You're all a bunch of white people afraid of your own abilities. You're afraid that you can't compete. You're afraid because now people that haven't, have been held down for four-hundred years aren't held back. That's your problem. You're afraid, and it's disgusting. I told you last week, I spent grades four to six in Germany, when the commies, the Soviets, your friend Putin, his predecessors, were coming after the Western nations of the world. There were blacks, whites, Asians, Latinos, all of us, living together, playing Little League together. That was fear, fear knowing that when you saw your father wake up in the morning with his service pistol in his hand, that might not be a drill. And I can tell you that Putin, just like he did with the Ukrainian children, stealing them, he wasn't going to stop and say, hmm, white one, no, you can go, you can go back to America. He was going to kill all of us. What are you afraid of? You're afraid of two words, affirmative action. And the Baetlin stuff only requires people to have a plan. When I first moved to Virginia, I was shocked. It was nineteen sixty-two. Just five years after a black woman was permitted to marry a white man by law. We haven't gone any further. That was a hundred years after slavery was abolished. We haven't gone any further right now. If you read the newspaper down in North Carolina, in a sixty-percent-black county, the Sons of the Confederacy want to move a traitor statute in front of the courthouse, where everyone has to look at it, and on your own school board. Part of the minorities are disabled. Two weeks ago, someone spoke about classes for special needs children, and they used the word, oh, I'm all in favor of that, we got to train them up, as if they were-
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Your time is up.
We're going backwards. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Dan Kametta, I've already stated my address. You are not alone in your disdain for DEI. I love the gentle nature that you present this, the illusion of equality. Don't fool me, not at all. In fact, you are in league with others who also hold DEI in contempt. The Ku Klux Klan, the Aryan Nation, the Patriotic Front. The list goes on and on. The Southern Poverty Law Center has a long list. And yes, discrimination is still happening. African-Americans in this county, unemployment twice as high as white people. That is something systematic, because it has remained two, three, four times higher for decades. So don't tell me things are getting, they are getting better, but hell, under this administration, they're getting worse. I have to say that the ones who should be calling for an end to affirmative action and any other corrective measure to the cruelties inflicted on people of color, women, the disabled, veterans, and the list goes on for DEI. Those are the people who have historically been traumatized by white, Christian nationalists, and their tangential travelers. The Christo-Fascists do not get to decide when to end DEI.
Thank you.
I was a little eager before, but I'm up here now, and knowing, knowing that-
Ma'am, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Kimmy Troy, Stonington Court in Granger.
Thank you.
I know that there's a war on history right now, so I'd just like to give a little vocabulary lesson real quick. Affirmative action is not synonymous with DEI. Affirmative action is a policy. DEI is an iteration that has evolved over time. Multiculturalism, urban affairs, we, there are so many different phrases over time because language changes. What's unfortunate is that some of you are afraid of language and afraid of words. And as someone mentioned earlier, this country and, and this space where we live, this county, is a microcosm of what's going on in our national, what's going on the national agenda. It took generations for this country to be created based on inequality. And it's going to take generations for us to correct with equity. There is a difference between equality and equity. Again, the words. And yes, we have come a long way. Someone referenced the Loving Act in Michigan, I'm sorry, in Virginia. And, you know, my biracial child standing right behind me, I am living proof of being able to stand here based on love, based on character, and I just want you to keep that in mind. And lastly, again, we have come a long way, but the rise in hate crimes that are based on gender, sexuality, race, and religion would beg to differ.
Thank you, Ms. Troy.
Hi, yeah, my name is Brayden Troy. I also live at Stonington Court in Granger, in your district, Mr. Ch, uh, Council President Shetzel. Thank you all for being here and for being here late as we are. I find it interesting that a lot of the framing around this particular bill has focused around the Supreme Court decision on colleges. As a current college student myself at Georgetown University, who has college experience, has been affected by the affirmative action decision, I would like to just kind of keep that in mind when we talk about this. I think we need to look at the effects on these colleges before making this decision. At my own university, the admissions rate of all students of color decreased significantly in the first class after affirmative action was struck down by the court. The same was true at similar peers, places like MIT and Johns Hopkins. Right here at the University of Notre Dame, of course, in their class of two thousand twenty-eight, which is their first one, of course, since the Supreme Court decision, that saw a forty-four percent decrease in black enrollment at an already predominantly, excuse me, predominantly white institution. Now, I know that these colleges are far beyond the scope of this council, but when we're framing the issue as a response to something that has happened in our universities and with the Supreme Court decision on universities, we have to take those effects into proper account. At the end of the day, this ruling was solely about colleges. It was not about hiring practices, it was not about the things that are taking place at the county level. The bill that is on the table here today at like, at ten thirty-five in, at night, this is a solely political decision, an unnecessary political decision, and is only on our agenda today to appeal to a very specific base of people. This is not even remotely about helping all members of St. Joseph County. This is only about scoring cheap political points that can be put into ads in the primary campaigns and the midterm campaigns coming up to two thousand twenty-six and therefore. I've grown up my entire life here. I love this community. I love it with my entire heart. I've also personally been discriminated against in very, in some ways in regards to this. From a very early age, from the second that I was thinking about applying to colleges and things, there were people telling me that I was not worthy of the colleges I was applying to, that I was not worthy of the spot that I did get at Georgetown, that I was not worthy of the accomplishments that I have received in my time here because of the cheap and constant attacks on affirmative action that are right here in our entire community, and since the ruling, the continue, continued attacks on DEI outright. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Troy.
Hello, my name is Midi Norberg. I live at thirteen twenty East Fox Street here in South Bend. So, I would like to comment on the decision to strike affirmative action and DEI language from the tax abatement ordinance. First and foremost, if everyone in this room rose their hand who was born before nineteen sixty-four, that is like the living population that has existed before civil rights administration, legislature and everything. So this is very recent. And from all of this, what is not being talked about, what is not being named, is like the people that it is going to affect. Because it's not necessarily me, I'm twenty-seven, I have a job, I'm getting established, can't buy a home here in South Bend, don't know whose fault is that, but the fact of the matter is, is that it is going to be the people working for these companies that are seeking these tax abatements. It's the workers. So, you are taking away a layer of protection for, I don't know, kids who are in daycares right now? Like, you, the, the, the most vulnerable people, that's what my job concerns. I worked for one of the, I don't know how Republicans call it, the entitlement programs, that's me, working with the poorest kids, giving them food and ensuring that the places that they are in are doing what is mandated. That's my job, okay? And what you all are doing is saying, yeah, those workers in twenty years, that's not me. I ain't got to worry about it. Let's just strike it. And the fact of the matter is, is that the two of you who are, are spearheading this, you, you just want to further your careers or be a good follower, and for the sake of what? A, a government career in Michiana? Like, removing this language will harm St. Joe residents who fall under any protected category, okay? Not just race, not just gender, being a woman, it's all protected categories, okay? And you're allowing them, the, like, this would allow for companies to potentially resume any discriminatory hiring practices. So favoring someone's son, like, oh, well, that's, you know, that's Amy Drake's kid, so let's just hire him instead. Doesn't matter the merit, it's just kind of like what you guys want to do with it. And in terms of qualification, I just went ahead to Amy's and Andy's campaign sites. Andy has a background in engineering, Amy has an education in journalism, majority of her life has not been in the public sector. A lot of you have talked about areas that are, I don't know, abundantly wealthy, like a home that could have gone for seven-hundred thousand dollars. My mom's home is eighty thousand, and I have no, like, ability to buy a home here in South Bend, so I don't know who's exactly talking about it. But anyways, back to the matter at hand. Neither of those backgrounds are in local government, tax law, business law, disparities research, community development, civil rights law, and the list goes on. They just, you guys just had enough money, people donate money to your campaigns, and that's how you got here. No actual transferable skills that would qualify you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Susan Feather Gill. I'm a psychologist here in the Granger area. I live at five oh-five six zero Brighton Court, and I'm against this bill. Affirmative action, as we all know, is an attempt to balance economic opportunities for people who have been disadvantaged for decades. I've seen firsthand and treated people in this area and in Chicago, African-American, Latino, and folks of other ethnicities, and seen the effects of discrimination. Notice that this was the very last thing that was on the list. I'm really sad by that. Notice the makeup of our council, predominantly white, or all white, I guess, and predominantly male. Where's the representation there? It's, it's, this isn't going to affect any of you or me as a white, educated woman, it's going to affect all of the folks who are African-American, or Latino, or Asian, or Native American in ways that we don't know. Please vote against us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Feather Gill.
She's the wiser one in the family. I'm Dr. Jeff Feather Gill. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. First, affirmative action is not DEI. That is totally a wrong statement. I don't know where you got that connection, but they're not the same thing. This is very clear. Also, affirmative action is still necessary, and there's a lot of reasons for that. First of all, discrimination in hiring is still a prevalent problem. Research shows that race significantly impacts hiring outcomes. For example, resumes with black-sounding names receive fewer callbacks than those with white-sounding names, even with identical qualifications, even with identical, identical qualifications. The disparity persists across different occupations and industries, including those with affirmative action policies. Women, particularly women of color, continue to experience discrimination in hiring and promotion. A two thousand seventeen survey indicated that forty-two percent of employed women and fifty-three percent of black women had experienced sex discrimination in the workplace. So, there is still discrimination going on. It's not time to do away with these policies and act like we're past racism. We're not past racism. And Judge Thomas is not a good- And Judge Thomas is not a good speaker for what's really going on in this country right now, which is ongoing efforts to take apart really important policies that protect our people. It's, and also affirmative action does not require preferences, and it does not involve quotas. It simply means that when faced with candidates similarly qualified, an employer makes an effort to give consideration to women and other groups who are underrepresented in employment. Sexism and racism continue in the United States. There's evidence that demonstrates that without affirmative action, people of color, women, members of other underrepresented groups will be discriminated against in hiring decisions. And I urge you to vote no for this bill.
Thank you, Dr. Featherhill.
Barb Carmichael, West North Shore Drive in South Bend. What was supposed to be a collaborative effort to review and revise the tax abatement bill was instead undermined by Amy Drake, who refused to hold the bill in committee so council members could address it further. This is a clear case of obstruction by a council member to promote her own extreme agenda. First, the word equity is stricken from the Health Department's mission statement. Now, language related to protected classes is the target. We've all witnessed the recent decimation of Health Department funding, which will gravely affect our community. What can we expect to happen next following these attacks on affirmative action? Words and their meanings have consequences. We fail to protect them at our peril.
Thank you, Ms. Carmichael.
Mike Crook, 449 South Philippa Street, South Bend, Indiana. Back in 2009, a wide group, a wide group of individuals from this community came together to write an ordinance that would set minimal requirements for receiving a tax abatement from the citizens of St. Joseph County. Representatives from the business community, minority communities, faith, labor, environmental, and social justice communities were all present. And though there was disagreement on a different criteria that could earn additional years of abatement, one thing that pretty much everyone agreed upon was a requirement that any company applying for an abatement would need to have an affirmative action plan. And now there are those on the council who want to remove the requirement. One of them even questions whether government should be the one to solve the discrimination problem. Really, who do you think created the problem in the first place? Our government established a caste system on this continent almost as soon as the first Europeans set foot here, and it continues to this day over 400 years later. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics for June 2025, the national unemployment rate for white men 16 years of age and older was 3.8%. For black men, it was double at 7.6%. For white women 16 years of age and older, it was 3.8%. For black women, 6.8%. According to the U.S. Department of Labor for June 2025, the unemployment rate for persons with disabilities ages 16 to 64 was 9.3%. For people 16 to 64 without a disability, it was less than half of that at 4.2%. And what about overall wealth? According to census.gov for 2021, the latest statistics that I could find, households with a black householder were more than, were more likely than those with a white householder to have unsecured debt, 61.3% versus 53.4%, especially student loans, 25.8% versus 17.2%, and medical debt, 22.5% versus 13.4%. In 2021, households with a white householder made up 65.3% of all U.S. households and held 80% of all wealth. Those with a black householder made up 13.6% of all U.S. households, but held only 4.7% of all wealth. And their medium, in their medium wealth of $24,520 was about 1/10 of the median wealth of households with a white householder at $250,400. I could go on and on with more statistics regarding disparities in education, health, longevity, but it all tells the same story. Minorities, especially African-Americans, continue to pay the price for America's caste system. What this community did back in 2009 was to take one very small step to begin to right that wrong, and now is not the time to halt it.
Thank you, Mr. Crook.
I ask you, please, vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alfred Guillaume Jr., PhD. I'm a member of We Make Indiana, and we envision a community where every person can thrive. I'll let you know what affirmative action is. Affirmative action affirms opportunities to women and underrepresented groups who have been denied these opportunities historically. Affirmative action affirms access for women, underrepresented groups, and others who have been historically denied access. Affirmative action really is the moral authority of this community and of this nation to correct historical injustices. And I would argue that affirmative action is the fairness and equal treatment ordinance. Thank you, and I urge you to vote against this. I'm also a Vietnam veteran.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
Good evening, Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive. I, others have spoken far more eloquently than I can, but I want to kind of bring our attention back to what this is about. And I was a part of the group in 2009 as well that formed the Tax Abatement Ordinance. It was a wide group of people of all different ethnicities and associations that put this together. And now we have one person or two people who want to do it on their own, tear it apart. They haven't consulted their community, they haven't consulted community groups. And I want to talk a little bit about tax abatement. This is not, as much as you might want to say in righteous terms about equal treatment for all. This is about a company that wants to come into our community, and it's a voluntary thing. They don't want to follow the tax abatement ordinance. They can still do what they want, as long as it complies with law, but they don't get the tax abatement. That's what this is about. Affirmative action is built into it because historically, in this county and across the United States, certain groups, not just ethnicities, but gender, sexual discrimination, all kinds of discrimination and prejudice has existed, and we need to correct that. And we want to get information from businesses on who they're hiring, how many have they hired, do they have a plan? Not for quotas, but to seek out qualified individuals in these historically disadvantaged groups so that they can choose from a large pool of people in our community and have a thought towards diversity. Yes, diversity, I say diversity is not a bad thing in our community. It's something that we should rely upon. It's our strength. From the founding of this community, diversity has been our strength. And for some of you to stand up there as whites and say, racism is over? Sexism is over? Discrimination is gone? No way! Did you not see the Ku Klux Klan flyers of last month or the month before in our community being circulated? It still exists. It's here. But again, back to tax abatement. This is not about forcing businesses to establish quotas. That's a false meme. This is about a tax abatement. We, as a community, have values. What you're saying is you don't value anybody outside of your own ethnic group. And that's loud and clear if you vote for this. And I think that you will suffer the consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Hi, my name is Roberta Milliken, and I live at 3602 Oak Crest Drive. I am a state employee. I work for vocational rehabilitation, helping people with disabilities to reach their employment goals, become self-sufficient, get off Social Security, get off SSI, get off SSDI. I, I was gonna, I would like to echo the last comments that tax abatement, this is about money, right? It's about me, my taxes, and whether or not companies, corporations, are going to have to pay taxes to the city, to the county, right? That's what it's about. It's about money. And you know what? I want to attract companies, small businesses, that are interested in hiring from our diverse community here, whether it be based on race, sex, LGBTQ, people with disabilities. I would like there to be an equal footing, right? And I think, I don't, I can't remember the numbers that were just talked about in terms of the inequality that does exist, even just on the basis of white people versus black people in our community, right? So apparently, we're not unequal. We're not on the equal footing, right? We aren't. We need to do something about it. We need to continue to do something about it. And taking away language that is going to encourage companies that want to come here, right, and want to be part of our community? I want those companies to be interested in all of us, not just some of us.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Pat Hackett, and I live at 2215 East Madison Street. I want to thank the council for the time this evening. I'm an attorney, and I'm a theologically trained professional. And I vigorously oppose this ordinance. DEI is an acronym, as we all know, for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And one way we preserve diversity, equity, and inclusion is through affirmative action. Policies, laws, and practices consistent with the values of this nation, both nationally and locally. Diversity is absolutely essential to a pluralistic democracy. And we're not all white, we're not all men, we're not all women who define ourselves in terms of white men. It's essential in a pluralistic democracy. And equity promotes fairness because it recognizes that life is not a level playing field now. There've been references to history, I'm talking about now. And inclusion is essential to a pluralistic democracy. Now, here's a theological point, and I know there's diversity in this room, but DEI is also, in the Latin, is a word, dei, and it means of God. And I'm going to suggest something. Certainly from my perspective of faith, is that it's a Latin word for of God. Diversity is of God. Equity is of God. And inclusion is of God. Because we're all made as instantiations of greatness and glory. And if we lose diversity, equity, inclusion, we lose this nation and the philosophical and theological foundations of what some of you would say this is a Christian nation. It's pluralistic, based in the Enlightenment, and to the extent it's Christian, we lose those roots. And when I say today, look at the national scene. It is not white men who are disappearing from the streets without due process, put in concentration camps, and then have a close advisor to the president joking about 65 million more meals for alligators. It is not white men who then have someone elected as president who is a predator, who jokes about his ability to sexually abuse you. And it's not white men, and the women define them, who are someone who the president mocks because of your disability. So this is a current issue. We will lose this nation, and I submit the soul of this nation if we continue to obliterate DEI and affirmative action. I vigorously oppose this, and I implore you to vote against this at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Hackett.
Good evening again, Deborah Durell. Thank you for hearing me again. I want to say in all honesty, we all are capable of discriminating. Everybody in this room knows that. And there are lots of ways that we discriminate, and we still get by with it. Have things improved? Yes. I can say, in the last 20 years, I have seen friends and family and coworkers start to change their language and get more politically and socially correct. Are they changed in their heart? No. It's simmering right under the surface. And in the last few months, those of us who are of an age that, and skin color, and maybe nationality, that experienced this discrimination are very sensitive to the subtle ways it is showing up again. And we do not want to have a contest of personalities in the workplace or anywhere else. Because without the affirmative action and DEI and whatever you want to call this, all of those people are increasingly vulnerable, no matter what you tell yourselves. People who are just barely masking their prejudice and getting together in bars and with their friends that they know, think alike, you should hear that conversation. So I encourage that this is a sensitive time. This is not the time to think that we are done with trying to encourage the better natures of ourselves. We have to constantly call ourselves out. Depending on how you were raised, depending on the situation, it's a hard situation, but it is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durell.
Still Nancy Duncan, still at Ridge Place, although my watch buzzed me about half an hour ago and told me to go to bed. Mr. Chatzel, in your remarks before the public began to speak, you said about going back to Penn and looking around and about discrimination, you said, "I haven't seen it." And I had a visceral reaction. I want to tell you, here I am, I am a white, well-educated woman, and I want to tell you about my experience with discrimination and with the EEOC, and whether affirmative action is important today or not. As a professor in a male-dominated academic department, who also happened to be a single mom, I experienced gender discrimination that was damaging my career. I went through all the appropriate channels described or defined by my organization, appealing to be heard. And I had guys looking like you, Mr. Chatzel, and you, Mr. Thomas, saying, "We just don't see it." Finally, after I wasn't, I wasn't rehired, I took all of my evidence, which I had compiled and saved with a ton of pain. And I went down to the federal office in Indianapolis, and I presented my case to the EEOC. And they looked at my case, and they said, "We see discrimination." And they gave me a letter asserting in their opinion, "I had the right to sue IUSB." Very real, very present. It's, thinking about it and talking about it, I still shake a little bit. Discrimination is insidious. Do not think, if you, if you haven't seen it, look harder. Look again. Talk to the people of color. Talk to the people who are, have disabilities. Talk to single moms who are struggling to keep their jobs. Ask them, is there such a thing as discrimination in the workplace? There is.
There is. I plead with you to take, not to take out the language of affirmative action. It's still important, it's there for a reason, and you can't tell just by looking at someone whether or not they might have experienced discrimination, but they have to have recourse. It took an amazing amount of stubbornness to go to the EEOC, and it's very rare to get heard all the way through. Don't use that as the only excuse, the only outlet for people who are going to be discriminated against. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
Lauren Waggy, Linden Road, South Bend. I appreciate your listening to all of us. In a perfect society, people are treated equal, but it was said by the council tonight, we are not a perfect society. I agree. This council isn't representative of St. Joseph County by economics, by race, by gender, and probably by binary sexuality. But you were elected, so the inequality is in our county by the people that elected you, because we did not elect a truly council that's representative of the people. Racism is alive and well in 2025 in St. Joe County, and we all have probably some of it, and we don't want to admit it. Bill 5225 is a modern Jim Crow law. Please vote no. The understand, my understanding of what government is for and what community leaders are for are to protect the poor, the underprivileged, the outcasts, the disabled. The current affirmative action laws are ones to be proud of. It doesn't need to be changed until we achieve true equality, and I look forward to the day in the future when we have that. At that time, we will truly be a great nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waggy.
Good evening, Trina Robinson, 914 Leacon Way West, NAACP president. As I stand before you tonight, I must admit I'm a little apprehensive, because the reality is, most of you have already made up your mind, and it will take an act of Congress to sway you, sway, to sway some of you otherwise. Most of us here tonight have witnessed a community rally together in opposition to decisions only to be let down. However, I feel it's important to mention that affirmative action policies was originally designed to address racial inequalities, although it has indirectly benefited white women, particularly in the realm of gender diversity and equal employment opportunities. When affirmative action measures expanded to include gender in addition to race, white women became one of the largest beneficiaries in sectors in education, government, and corporate employment. Research and legal analysts have shown that while affirmative action's primary goal was to support historically marginalized racial groups, the inclusion of gender equity provisions significantly improved professional and education opportunities for white women. Without affirmative action and tax abatement, it will lead to less equitable distribution of tax benefits. Tax abatements often aim to encourage investments in underserved areas or support disadvantaged businesses. Without affirmative action measures, wealthier individuals or businesses will benefit disproportionately, potentially widening economic disparities. Is this what you want? I must ask one of the sponsors of this bill if she consulted with the approximate 700 African-American or Hispanics in her district regarding their opinion. Probably not. Since she was quoted, we think the time has come to get out of this unfair treatment, and further stating it can adversely affect qualified applicants. Are you telling me that people of color are not qualified? Then we have another sponsor of this bill quoted as referencing Donald Trump's executive order. Are you telling me you would rather listen to a convicted felon versus the appropriate 650 African-Americans or Hispanics in your district? And let us not forget the Penn High School teacher who says he doesn't see injustice based on race and employment or promotion in county government. I guess not, since Penn High School has an African-American population of approximately 7.6% and probably less than that in staff. I guess you would never see injustice, it's when the county council is all white, our area plan commission is all white, our redevelopment commission, drainage board, and board of health are all white, county auditor, county sheriff, county prosecutor, county treasurer, county auditor are all white. I highly recommend that each of you engage in conversations with people from diverse backgrounds to understand their experiences before making decisions that impact them negatively. In closing, I can only hope that when you look back over your legacy you've left in life, it can be one that will make your children proud to call you mom or dad, and not a legacy where your children are asking, "Why do you hate people of color?"
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax. I would like to thank you all for being here. This has been a long, long evening. I'd like to point out something to you. Did you discern the intensity of feeling that was expressed by pretty much everybody who appeared before you? Do you realize what's going on? What you have just received is a bomb, an ideological bomb, the intent to which, of which, is to further destabilize our community. It is a way of drawing us into hostile camps, a way to discern enemies. No reverse discrimination against whites, but then we don't want to talk about discrimination that may possibly be out there against other people. This is exactly what the oligarchs want. This is what the great wealth wants. The great wealth wants us all to be a bunch of peasants and serfs fighting over each other for scraps. And you have two people in this body who are busily doing the work of those who will never be here, but who are benefiting from the kind of dispute that we unfortunately experience.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone online who'd like to speak in opposition to this bill? Who is first? All right, Cheryl Nix, please.
Good evening. Yes, it's getting late. Cheryl Nix, Clay Township. I'm not sure even where to start, but I, okay, so I'm going to just say this. I want to go back to what Steve Francis said. This is a tax abatement ordinance. A company that does not want to be involved with affirmative action does not have to apply for a tax abatement. I'm going to tell you my personal feelings about tax abatements. I hate them. I hate them because I pay taxes, I pay a lot of taxes. I pay gas tax, sales tax, income tax, property tax. So I got to tell you, knowing businesses get these tax breaks, not happy about it. So at the very least, I want them to be held to some standards. So I'd like to think that in this county, one of those standards is that they are not discriminatory against marginalized communities that are very historically marginalized, that people who are qualified, because remember, that's in the ordinance, qualified candidates have a shot. Okay, so I want to say that. I also think it's a little hypocritical that Ms. Drake has come forward with this proposal when she herself is a benefit of affirmative action. As I said, a few months ago, when Mr. Rudden spoke against DEI, he's not old enough to know, but I am, what life was like for women in the 50s and 60s and 70s, couldn't even get our own credit cards. Ms. Drake has benefited from affirmative action by efforts to make sure that women have access to college, have access to opportunities. And here she is, wanting to eliminate that language from a tax abatement ordinance, even though that she herself has benefited from. Do you see what I'm saying? This, this is, this makes no sense. Finally, I just want to say, if you have not met, if Andy Rudden and Amy Drake have not met with black community leaders, disabled community leaders, women community leaders to discuss this, this, absolutely stop doing this. If you have, because the tax abatement ordinance, as it was written, remember, it was, when it was written, large groups of people, if you haven't talked to labor, if you haven't met with those people, you have no business changing this ordinance. Don't do it. It's inappropriate. The time was spent, groups were brought together, and to just randomly decide to strike language on some kind of whim because Trump said something you liked, I don't care what he said. This is our county, and this is what we want for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. Ms. Wolfson. Linda?
Yeah. Okay, I'm on now. I, I spent the last two or three days wondering if I should come to this meeting, not because I didn't think it was important, but because I wasn't sure I could control my tongue and what I would say. I was so angry at the very words on the paper and the many people, even in tonight's meeting, the people on the council who said nothing that resembled the feelings that I had. And I don't have to say much, because everybody has said the things I would. I have to tell both Francis, Steve and Mike Crook, I mean, thank you for bringing up the initial writing of the ordinance. We had a dynamite coalition of all kinds of people who actively worked for different things, different areas that were our areas of concern, but we united together with this ordinance, and we, and affirmative action was right at the center of it. And what we said was, "Look, if you're going to use our taxes, you have to use our taxes. Maybe there's some point to be made. I certainly think that the city and the county could do better for some problems we have right now, problems like housing. There's money sometimes they have to provide, but if you do it, do it for everybody." And, and there are certain people that never have a shot, and if I had time, I'd talk about what I learned as a teacher, and, and teaching in high school, and kids from the day they could understand what was going on, they understood what was happening to their parents, they understood what they were supposed to be. It happens differently because of class. I was told I, I should be a nurse or a teacher. I said, "No, I'm not going to be a teacher." And I ended up as a teacher, and I learned so much more about it. They, it's, the, the system's not fair. Kids understand fair, but sometimes politicians don't.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfson. Ms. Logan, is your hand up?
Yes, it is.
Please go ahead.
I'm wanting to say that I agree with all of the other opposition statements, but can I?
Ms. Logan, please state your name and address for the record.
Jessica Logan, 51710 Queckside Drive, Ranger, Indiana. I'm urging you to vote against this bill, and I wanted to say that Amy Drake quoted Justice Roberts in her defense of this bill. I'd like to respond with, with that, with a quote from Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She said, "Throwing out preclearance when it has worked and is continuing to work to stop discriminatory changes is like throwing away your umbrella in a rainstorm because you are not getting wet." And I would say that if you substitute the word preclearance for affirmative action, you have summed up the issue with this bill. Please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Chris, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, but please go ahead.
Hello. Chris Vandenvaas is my husband. I'm going to speak. I'm Laura Hagwood, and I live on North Shore Drive in South Bend. Ms. Drake, I share your concern for promoting equality and ending division. I have a different perspective on the role that affirmative action can play in doing that. In my two terms as an academic department chair, I followed my institution's affirmative action hiring guidelines in reviewing hundreds of applications for faculty and administrator positions. The discipline of affirmative action compliance enhanced our objectivity in hiring and improved the quality of our staff. Why? Because affirmative action ended the old boy network and cronyism that too often unfairly promoted white-skinned mediocrity over dark-skinned excellence. Affirmative action accountability also heightens search committees' self-awareness, ensuring that unconscious bias does not distort assessment of applicants. Affirmative action language in job advertisements also produces larger and stronger applicant pools by assuring each prospective candidate, including white men, that their application will be equally and fairly considered. And yes, we did hire some genuinely meritorious white men, along with many outstanding professionals of color whom we might have overlooked if not for the prompting of affirmative action. The anti-DEI actions, excuse me, in Washington and Indianapolis, and the anti-affirmative action proposal now before the council are not progress toward fairness, but backlash against it. But there is no basis in reality for the fear that now drives white resentment of affirmative action. American prosperity is not zero sum. There is plenty for all of us if we fairly share the opportunities to earn it. Please let our county continue acting affirmatively so that all of us can prosper.
Thank you, Ms. Hagwood. Kay? I think your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone. My name's Kay West Hughes, and I live at 216 West Madison Street in South Bend, and I really appreciate all the people who spoke in support, or in support of, against this bill. I want to go on record of being against this bill, and I appreciate all the facts and all the insightful comments that were made. From the supporters, I've only heard anecdotal stories or opinions. I haven't heard any facts about affirmative action. How do you know that affirmative action isn't working? It's just your opinion, and if you don't have facts to back that up, I don't feel you have a right to bring this bill to a vote. And this bill's going to hurt our community. It's going to hurt members of our community. And I'll give you an example from a story we heard earlier this evening about an individual who was in a position of authority, who could vet candidates for an apprenticeship program, and he felt aggrieved because he had to admit black candidates, saying that they weren't qualified. But as far as I understand, an apprenticeship program is supposed to be where you get training. It's a ground level, get training, get, get a foot in. So what, what was the issue there? I don't really understand that. And if those protections are taken away, what's going to happen there? It's not going to be a good story. And it also puts the burden on proving discrimination on the discriminated, and that is a big rock to push uphill. That's a lot of, that's a lot of determination for people who are already resource-strapped. So I've got to say, you know, I, also, I heard someone, I don't know if it was Amy, somebody at the beginning, said they want to be a leader in this state with this issue. I want us to be a leader in this state on this issue, and take a principled stand and not go with lockstep what's happening in this country. It's, it's something that South Bend should be proud to be able to take a principled stand. That's what we stand for as a community. We have a community that's very diverse, and we should represent that community. That's all I want to say. Apart, well, I want to say more, but I know it's a long night. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West Hughes.
Hi, I'm, oops. Hi, I'm Rebecca Go, and my address is 921 Cottage Grove, South Bend, Indiana, 46616. Back in my teenage years, I used to have long arguments with my colleague and friend, Sky, and I would argue that we face the same level of discrimination because we are both minorities. because we are both minorities. In fact, I would argue that we faced equal discrimination because he was black and I was half Asian. But let's be clear. Have you looked at me? I mean, some people don't even know that I'm Asian. They get confused by my last name and think it's like Rebecca Go. But it's not. It's just my last name. What I failed to recognize back then that I know now is that being white-passing, as I am, is everything. It opens up doors that just simply are not there to others who don't look like me. And I've spent the last 25 years trying to find Skye so that I can apologize for my arrogance and my lack of understanding. Here's the thing. I think a lot of you folks on the council are pro-life. So I have a question. Do you believe that black and brown people were born, when born, have the same capacity for success as their white counterparts? Do you actually believe that? Do you believe that black and brown people, when born, are just as smart and capable of hard work and success as their white counterparts? If so, then how do you account for the ongoing disparities that affect black and brown community member's success? Data, including our county's health department's own Health Equity Report from 2022, show that outcomes are simply not the same. Are the majority of black and brown people less intelligent at birth? Or is it more likely that some people simply have not had the same opportunities as others? Some of you on the council have said that you believe that we live in a meritocracy. If that's the case, how do you account for the lack of parity when it comes to success? Clearly, things are not substantially better than they were before the various civil rights acts of the 1960s and 70s. The reality is that it will take generations and generations to recover from the historical racial injustices that have occurred in our country and indeed in our own community and which continues to occur today, if we're honest. Even Mr. Shetzel stated that historically, individuals' wealth has come through home ownership, which we know has denied to any number of our black and brown friends and neighbors from many, many people. So lots of folks that I know and who are my neighbors don't have $50,000 from their parents to run for the next office. They don't even have $50,000 to help with their down payment for their own house. The original tax abatement language as written was not perfect, but stripping it with important language, please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Go. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak? Cheryl?
My name is Cheryl Ash. I live at 3830 Langley Drive, South Bend, Indiana. My understanding of affirmative action is different than the two people who have sponsored this bill. My understanding of affirmative action started with how you advertise jobs, that you don't just advertise jobs in the South Bend Tribune or you don't just advertise them on certain radio stations. My understanding of affirmative action would be you might advertise in the South Bend Tribune, but you would also advertise in the newspaper El Puente, and I know I'm pronouncing it wrong, which would be read by many of our Hispanic brothers and sisters. I understand that the radio stations would not just be something. I can't remember the number now. But we would look at the radio stations that African-Americans listen to. My understanding is when you're making judgment about people, you don't judge them by their name. And as someone has previously said, people who have, shall I say, more traditional African-American sounding names, their applications are pushed aside, and that has been proven by study after study. I say this bill should be voted down as no. And then if the two people are very concerned who sponsored this bill, then go back and list what they think affirmative action should be. As I said, is it advertising other places besides the South Bend Tribune? Is it saying that you're not going to look at people's addresses and zip codes, which studies have shown is very true? I can remember when my hair was not acceptable because it wasn't straight. Therefore, I challenge the two people who sponsored this bill to go back and write down what they think should be included when we consider affirmative action, not just to say you're going to strike it down. So please vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ash. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, are there any further comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 52-25. Are there any further comments from council members?
I'm not sure how to raise my hand, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just don't know where the little hand button is on here, so I just want to make sure you don't forget me over here.
Ms. Shabazz, why don't you go ahead and be the first councilperson to comment?
All right, thank you. So first, I just want to thank everybody that's spoken tonight. We've been sitting here for maybe five and a half hours, listening to others speaking. And I'm assuming everybody that has sat there online and in person is hoping that your elected officials hear your voice and support you as we are elected to serve the community. Over the past two weeks, I have received emails, phone calls, walking through the grocery store, at a funeral, multiple places in the community, with people asking me about this ordinance, asking me, why is it up? Why is it even here? Not one person has asked me to vote in favor of it. Every single person, every email that we have received has been, do not support this. Affirmative action is a policy that was created a while ago to address historical injustices and discrimination by providing opportunities to unrepresented groups. It involves initiative-taking measures to ensure that individuals from these groups have equal access to education, employment, and other areas where they have been historically marginalized. The petitioners of this ordinance have not been able to provide any examples of why this needs to be changed other than it follows what we are seeing happen at the federal and state level. I've heard the connection to DEI and affirmative action as the reason for the changes in this tax abatement. Again, diversity, equity, and inclusion and affirmative action are not the same thing. DEI is a broader framework aimed at fostering an inclusive environment where diversity is valued, equity is ensured, and everyone feels a sense of belonging. Both are crucial for building a fair and equitable society, but they operate on different levels and address different aspects of inequality. Affirmative action remains a vital tool in addressing the deep-rooted inequalities that continue to shape access to education, employment, and opportunity. It's not about giving unfair advantages. It's about leveling the playing field after centuries of systemic racism and exclusion. It's also been stated that the reason for this ordinance is due to reverse discrimination or racism. Using the term "reverse discrimination" to attack affirmative action ignores the real and measurable ways that marginalized communities have been denied access, voice, and opportunity. It flips the script to center those who have historically benefited from privilege rather than addressing the structural barriers that persist for others. The term "reverse discrimination" is not only misleading, it's absurd. It suggests that efforts to create equity for historically marginalized communities are somehow equivalent to the systems of oppression they've endured. We cannot move toward a society by pretending that we already live in one. Affirmative action is one of the few policy tools that directly confront inequality. Dismantling it only entrenches the status quo, and that status quo has never served anyone equally. Affirmative action is not about giving special treatment. It's about correcting structural imbalances that have persisted for generations. It recognizes a simple truth. Opportunity in this country has never been equally distributed, and we can't fix it by pretending that the playing field already is. Dismantling affirmative action under the guise of fairness only entrenches existing privilege. Real equality isn't colorblind, it's color-conscious in a way that acknowledges history, addresses disparities, and builds a future where merit is truly accessible to everyone. Some of my fellow councilmen have referred to different Supreme Court justices to cite why they believe we need to eliminate affirmative action from our tax abatement. So I'd like to end with some quotes from Justice Jackson. "Deeming race irrelevant in law does not make it so in life. It will take longer for racism to leave us, and ultimately ignoring race just makes it matter more. The only way out of this for all of us is to stare at racial disparity unblinkingly and then do what evidence and experts tell us is required to level the playing field and march forward together, collectively striving to achieve true equality for all Americans." For these reasons and many more, I cannot support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shabazz. Mr. Katanzeray?
Mr. Shetzel, thanks for the time. So much has been said here tonight. I respect all the speakers, both for and against this ordinance. A lot has been said. Having been a part of that 2009, I would call it a blue-ribbon panel. I wouldn't necessarily consider myself a blue-ribbon person, but the people that were on the panel were certainly deserving of that nomenclature being a blue-ribbon panel. And prior to that, the 2000 version of this ordinance, so it was revamped nine years later to reflect changes that were needed in our community. I brought this up a couple weeks ago, too. I think, you know, this got defeated, the stripping of the current tax abatement ordinance. The attempt at that last year, when that got defeated, the opportunity was there and the offer was made to admit that we need to make some changes to our tax abatement ordinance, not having ever thought it was going to be, this would be the big one, that affirmative action in the ordinance would be the one that would cause us to have a big discrepancy over. I didn't think that would even be considered, but was certainly willing to sit down and work with others across the aisle to work on revamping our tax abatement ordinance in areas we could come to some consensus on. I have never taken tax abatement lightly. I don't think any of us here do. Cheryl Nix made a good point, I think, tonight. We all pay a lot of taxes, and we expect companies to come here to do their fair share when they ask for a handout or to help foster the development of their business. In very much the same way recently, when GM Sansung SDI came to the county. I always consider tax abatement more in a global approach. Yeah, we're the county government. This new factory is going to be in the county, in New Carlisle. But I think many of us at the table began to speak to the developers and say, listen, this is going to benefit the unincorporated county, and that's not necessarily where the problems are in our community. Some of the problems in our community are in Mishawaka and South Bend. How are you, as a developer, going to reach out and get to historically disadvantaged groups and offer jobs? Some of these good-paying, 1,600 good-paying jobs, union jobs, how are you going to manage making those jobs available to others? Well, the company made a commitment to us. They said, well, you know what? We're probably going to go reach out to community leaders. We're going to reach out to religious groups. We're going to go to churches on Sundays, and we're going to talk about jobs. And we're going to make available training for people so they can know how to do these jobs when these jobs become available. So we don't take tax abatement lightly. We make these people commit to things. That was just one example of one of the commitments we made them make, to offer them the abatement. Never once, that I'm aware of, has anybody come to us and said, you know, we're just not going to come to you for a tax abatement because you've got this affirmative action portion in your ordinance, so we're not going to ask for the abatement. We had one person that, one group, a small company out of Mishawaka that didn't have an affirmative action plan, but our economic development department worked with them to help them develop an affirmative action plan. And, you know, it wasn't ideal, but they helped them. The offer was made, and they helped. Of all the things that I think, you know, we could do to improve this ordinance, this is just not one of them. And that's why I stand firmly opposed to calling this, number one, the Fairness and Equal Treatment Ordinance and stripping the name away from tax abatement off the ordinance and based on the principles that everything I've heard tonight, everything I know and feel and know about historically advantaged groups that I have learned in my lifetime since I was born in 1965, since I've been around. I know there are a lot of historically disadvantaged groups and people that have been discriminated against, and I think this is one small component. We can ask companies, when they come here, to please come and consider having an affirmative action plan. If you don't have one, we'll help you develop one. If you don't have one, and you don't want to have one, and you don't want our tax abatement, then maybe you're not the right company to ask for an abatement from our community, but we certainly would welcome your business here. So I cannot support this 5225 in its current form. Thank you, Mr. Shetzel.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzeray. Any other council comments? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Shetzel. I want to actually start out by correcting one of the speakers here. Mr. Troy, words are important. You said that you had people questioning the accomplishments you have received. Those are accomplishments you have earned, sir, that you've earned, okay? One of the reasons that this ordinance was presented to us was, in general, a reflection of what's happening at the federal and the state level. And I ask, who do we want to be? Do we want to reflect leadership that denigrates people with developmental disabilities? Do we want to reflect a governor and a state legislature that defunded people with physical disabilities by way of reducing tremendous funding to Indiana School of the Deaf and Indiana School of the Blind? Diversity, affirmative action goes beyond race. It extends to people of other abilities that live in our community who still have value and serve, contribute, and participate in our community in a myriad of beautiful ways. What's being disputed this evening as apparently the necessity affirmative action language that must be removed, it was never discussed before it was presented. It wasn't discussed with the economic development team. It wasn't discussed with the rest of the council. It wasn't discussed with the council attorney before it was hastily presented. I questioned the motive of why it was filed, when it was filed. It was almost exactly six months after the last defeat of an abatement ordinance, and we know that the cycle in our council rules is to prevent any failure of an ordinance that requires another six-month period. There was an effort at the beginning of this year to identify that, yes, our abatement ordinance and our economic development could be enhanced, but the action of filing this hastily in the way that it was suspiciously looks like an effort to prevent a more collaborative effort for the next six months unless this is passed exactly as presented or in some format. A no vote basically puts us on hold for another six months without some extreme measures. And we acknowledge that there are more substantive aspects of our tax abatement ordinance that probably should be addressed. They aren't by this proposal. There are a lot of things that I could say about that, but one of the major things that has been discussed, whether it was through a chief justice quote or a comment about observations, was that is affirmative action even still needed in today? And I don't want to disregard the commentary that we've heard from the public tonight because all of those contributions matter. But I want to speak to some more specific facts about how discrimination, affirmative action are still very, very necessary things within our vocabulary and within our actions. Now, mind you, I'm going to mention the Department of Justice, but the Department of Justice figures and facts come from self-reporting from local agencies. So whether it's a rural police department or an urban police department, or the FBI, or the county, or somewhere else, it is still locally-reported values that are probably underreported. Let's be honest. underreported, let's be honest. But the Department of Justice reported an increase in hate crimes within Indiana over the most recent three years they have data for: 141 in 2021, 174 in 2022, 184 documented hate crimes in 2023. So it doesn't matter who's the president, these are coming from your local agencies, an increase in hate crimes. These aren't just recent increases, but they're significant increases over the number of hate crimes documented since 2009 that were well below 100. Again, probably underreported, but still a documented increase. Additionally, Indiana saw a 141% increase in antisemitic incidents in 2024 year-over-year alone. The nation's highest year-over-year spike in antisemitism, as reported and recorded by the Anti-Defamation League, a nonpartisan group. Outside of these statewide trends, less than a decade ago, Jody Henderson, a member of our community, a veteran of the war in Afghanistan and gay, was beaten to death as a hate crime. The last known lynching in the state of Indiana took place less than 100 years ago. There are people alive today who may have been there at that moment, or at the very least read it or saw it or heard it in the news and the radio the very next day. They're alive today. We are not that far removed from this, people. That is the last hanging in Marion, Indiana, documented in our state. I would love to say that we're past that, and thank God that is at least approaching 100 years ago, and there hasn't been another recurrence, but we can't possibly be far enough away from that history. I thought that the last occurrence of distribution of KKK recruiting materials was in November of last year. I heard tonight that there were more materials distributed recently within the last month, and it wasn't just here. It was a multi-city flyer campaign across Goshen, Elkhart, South Bend, Valprezo, Michigan These stark examples illustrate how far we are from a society that is removed from the need for affirmative action, that is removed from the need for addressing, presenting, and affirming policies that undermine the discrimination that has haunted our nation for effectively its entire history. Prior to this evening, I made some concessions. I guess I'm gaining a reputation for being a compromiser on the council. In so many ways, I think that's a good thing. We need compromise in government, we need collaboration in government, we need to work together to common solutions. In those proposed amendments that were concession or compromise, I acknowledge that affirmative action is difficult, if not next to impossible, to enforce as a policy, as a government agency. I don't think that means that it's bad for us to have as an established goal, but I acknowledge that it's difficult, if not next to impossible, for us to enforce. To that extent, this body, the people who are here today, as well as in recent years, we've passed abatements, and we've renewed the continued funding of abatements for organizations who did not follow the current ordinance, that did not have a scoring that was performed and presented to us, that claimed, and we accepted, that their affirmative action plan and minority reporting was intellectual property, and it was protected, and that they couldn't provide it to us without being harmed themselves as a business. And right, wrong, or indifferent, we accepted that, and we continue to approve it. So if we're not going to enforce our own ordinances as they're written, then why have them at all? I don't mean to say that that I don't believe in the value of affirmative action, but to acknowledge that maybe better language, rather than stripping the language, is the right thing to do. And even though I contend with myself on a principled or a values basis of, are my concessions devaluing my values, or are they actually a proposal to a better form of government? And I hope that anybody who is present, listening, deciding tonight agrees that it's a better form of government, and it's not a lesser form of government. So I'd like for my peers, my colleagues up here, to consider those proposed amendments. It does withdraw the language of affirmative action. I'm not proud of that, the amendments that I proposed, not for the lack of valuing it, but for a lack of our ability and our storied past of not enforcing it to begin with, and replacing it with specific references that a minority is no longer defined, as in our current ordinance, by just being certain races. But it acknowledges the Civil Rights Act of 1964, specifically Title VII, and the very diverse groups that are protected by that federal law. So enhancing what the definition of a minority is, as it should be. It's not a it's not a criticism of the original authors and contributors to the ordinance as it was. I think we just continue to learn and grow, and we have an opportunity to make it better. Rather than removing the references completely from affirmative action and just striking it out and doing nothing else, it's replacing those sections of language with the reporting that these organizations already have to produce, already have to submit to the federal government, it's called an EE01C form, or EE01 form, an SB1 form to the state, and things of that nature, but requiring them to submit it to us as well. We're not asking them to do more work, we're just asking to be carbon copied on their communication, to the same standards that other bodies are holding them to. If we're going to provide them that tax benefit, by God, they should provide us that documentation as well. I think it would make life easier for our economic development team and for our council to review, enforce, and approve these in the future. I'll leave my comments to that because, in full transparency and in an effort to be proactive, I emailed this exact language and these exact amendments to everybody on the council, or council attorney, or council secretary last week. It was very detailed, per the comments that I made at our committee meeting two weeks ago. So I'll leave my comments at that, but that's the only way that I could possibly support this ordinance, is if it was amended to include that language. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Any other comments from council members?
I'd just like to make, I'll try to be brief. I know it's almost reaching the midnight hour here. I have, part of why I reached the conclusion that I have, that I can't support something that strikes affirmative action, is that there's been a lot of joking about when you were born, 1965, before 1965. Well, I was born long enough before 1965 that I was, as a young, developing child and then pre-teen, watching in horror the scenes that were happening in the southern United States in the early 1960s. Couldn't believe how people were being treated by other people, human beings, how they were being, you know, firehosed and dogs, you know, unleashed to attack them. It was horrifying as a young kid, and made an impression on me that stuck with me and formed a lot of my values since then. So that's a bit of my history and why I can't support it, but just a few things I want to say, because so many, there were so many eloquent speakers tonight, that I just want to say that I think this whole process, that we've discussed this before, in 2009, it was a rich process, full of, rich with diversity of many kinds, to develop this ordinance we have today. This ordinance that's proposed to us tonight was developed by two individuals on the council with not a lot of understanding of the history of that. So I believe that, again, showing that it's always more important when you're inclusive and diverse, is this process should have been more inclusive and diverse in carrying out what you want to see in a tax abatement ordinance. We've talked before about how we need it, the last time there was something that came up about the tax abatement ordinance, the importance of working together, pulling together people to review and update an ordinance that was developed in 2009. It needs some updating, we all agree to that. And again, a couple of comments that people have made, I think, tax abatements are voluntary. As a company, you come into the county, and you seek a tax abatement if you think it's going to help you, and if you're going to get it, if you're going to qualify. The county doesn't give out as many tax abatements as the city as Al Bend does, by far, but the ones we do give out, I think, should reflect the values of our community, and should also respect the citizens in our community. And so that's why I think it's very important if we're going to revise a tax abatement, it should be a more inclusive process, and I really think it needs to reflect who we are as a people. So I can support this bill tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Shetzel.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. Councilwoman Drake.
Can I ask for a five-minute recess? Because if we're going to continue to talk, I need to use a bathroom.
Okay. I think we can do that. Yes? Five minutes.
Recording stopped.